Good evening, everyone, and welcome to tonight's Greenwood City Council meeting on this Monday, March the 3rd, 2025 at 7:00 P. M. Ms. Derry, would you call the role, please?
Yes, I see Brown, Zabson, Ralph Meeker.
Here.
Tim Terry, Abson, Ron, Roger Rainwater.
Here.
Steve Tedford.
Here.
Rob Powell.
Here.
Thank you very much. If everyone would please rise when we get our meeting tonight. Prayer led by Trent Hampton from Calvary Temple, followed by the pledge allegiance from Chief Sturtevant.
Lord, we love you. Thank you for a great city like Greenwood with multiple elected officials that love you and serve you. So many concerned citizens that put you first in all their decisions. God, we ask that you would let your kingdom come and your will be done in Greenwood, Lord. That you would lead, you would guide, you would direct. We know that Abraham's sin has been his life looking for a city whose builder and maker was God. And, Lord, we ask, even though we may do that, and we are looking for eternity, while we're here, God, let us make Greenwood a city that is a light on the hill that all people are drawn to, that gives you glory. God, ask that you would keep our officials, our citizens, God, our public service, that you would keep them safe physically, mentally. God, that you would get glory throughout our lives, that you would be exalted in every decision, that you would lead us in everything, God. Give us protection, give us peace, and deal with us, that we would be in alignment with you, God, in Jesus' name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Take a seat. Thank you, Trent. Trent threatened me with a four-five minute sermon, so thank you. Appreciate you being here and doing that. Thanks. We'll move right on in. We are going to have, I would ask the councils consideration and approval of the minutes for the February 3rd City Council meeting and the special call meeting on February 6th.
Mike, you want to step in?
We have a motion, good second. Either way.
Okay, Ralph, take it. Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Meeker?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Powell?
Yes.
Mr. Tedford?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Recognizations and acknowledgements. I know the wrestling team did a great job. I don't have any specifics. Tim's not here to fill me in on that. He usually keeps me up on the data, but they, several awards went out to the wrestling team. Athletic goes to those kids. Junior High Quiz Bowl, Tom, what was it they won there? Sorry?
State.
State won it? So that's cool. That's a bright, bright young kid. Mine is coming up, so congratulations to the Junior High Quiz Bowl. If I missed anything, let me know. Mike, did you do anything worth talking about? Yeah, you, Mike. Just picking on you. Committee reports, some have been submitted, not all, so if you find yourself needing a committee report, let me know. And Danielle will reach out to those that are responsible and get that to you ASAP. Somewhere on your tab with that, I believe. Citizen, next on the agenda is Citizen Forum. Excuse me. We have two that have signed up tonight, and if you will come to the podium, state your name and address, and you can visit the council. You have five minutes to do that, and we've got time right here. I'll let you know. So Brandon Riggs can leave as signed up first. Mr. Riggs.
Mary Penslow, council members, thanks for having me here. I live at 107 Spruce Street, just up the street, near Bell Park. It's been a while since I've addressed the council. My drainage ditch has caved in my backyard, and I don't know how far we are along with that. And it's taken so long that my foundations start to crack in the house.
Okay, you're, you are aware of the railroad ties where once the wall was.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Update?
I'm not, I'm not real sure when it happened, the foundation.
On the house?
On my house is now showing signs of cracking.
Mr. Turner, Jeff, sorry. I don't, I don't know if Jeff was originally the, was the street director when we first talked to you. It's been a while.
It's been a long time.
And so, but Jeff.
The engineering is complete.
Okay.
The bid documents I had not seen yet, but then we got put on hold for a project that hadn't necessarily started. So I slowed that down for the time being, maybe more than fifty that time.
Yeah, there's gonna be a discussion, I think, about the parts, sorry, the streets projects. So not to delay you any further, but certainly I know Jeff had an engineer who was looking at it. Is that the one? Who is that?
Not sure.
Harry George with Hawkins.
Yeah, Hawkins.
Okay. Yeah, I'm concerned for you.
It's, it's a pretty complex project.
Yeah, exactly. So we talked about it, but I'm just throwing those ties back up as you be right back to where you were.
Years.
Oh, yeah, it's been at least two, maybe more.
Yes.
Okay, let me, Jeff and I, I'll get, I'll encourage Jeff tomorrow to reach out to Hawkins and Weir, see where they are on it, and with council's blessing, if you will, because we have kind of stymied some of the projects a little bit just due to, due to cost and things like that, but yours needs to be looked at. So I'll, I'll promise you that we'll take a look at it again tomorrow and get Hawkins and Weir on the phone and see where they are. They're not much, but. Let me ask you this, sir.
Yes, sir.
Is water infiltrating into the house? Hopefully none.
I have not seen any evidence of water.
We don't want to wait that long. Jeff, did we do anything? You're looking at that wall back in the yard to the riot. Did we do anything?
We did what we could without disturbing anything, as opposed to pull one piece out of it. It's a giant gem.
As far as the railway tie. And I know that, well, I guess what I was asking about are the tree, there were some trees, literally, which was holding that in.
Right.
And so you go cutting those out, and he's got a horse.
So that's the car before the horse, running between it's. Got to get the wall done and then remove the stuff.
I guess my question is, without you, does it sound like it's falling? I say to the right, that is. Is it going down that, that hole?
That ditch?
I'll give you a second, sir. Are you part, are you part of this?
I'm, I'm, uh, seen them, Rick.
Okay.
Uh, so am I understanding that we're waiting on the engineer?
Correct.
The same way we were fourteen months ago.
It's taken that long to do, do the construction documents?
There was, that was supposed to have been back in, the text you had was in January, it was, January was a start date of the project.
That was the original plan.
No, that was what was said in December. So January.
We approved our budget in January. And if we approved our budget at the end of January, I couldn't have done it before then because we, we didn't do capital projects until the budget was approved. And so we paused for a month, for a month on the project per the council's request.
Well, we didn't get any notification of that.
Situation is just, it just keeps getting worse with time.
Literally eroding that.
Yeah, it's just.
It's cracked all the way from the foundation from up the side of the house, half, half the house is starting to slide off. With seven.
Okay.
So y'all will probably be, I think you're, you're working on getting a little bit more responsibility in this project by waiting around.
I understand.
All right, absolutely. And we don't want to, we don't want to have to rebuild the house, obviously, but we'll, we'll take all that into consideration. And I mean, I'll, I'll promise you this, tomorrow, you will, let me back up. Jeff and I will go in the council or conference room and call Jerry Shores at Hawkins and Weir, find out exactly what that looks like on his list, and if he's nowhere near doing anything, I'm, I'm moving to another engineer, which doesn't sound good.
But our, what we have been told is that was already out, and it was released for bid.
Yes, that's true.
And so it has already.
You were told that by us?
Yes. We have emailed, a text.
It was ready to bid.
That they were, were ready to bid.
Okay.
And that it was. With council approval, we can go forward and have that, that bid.
So they shouldn't be held up on the engineer?
No, other than the bid.
All right. My bad.
I've got a text from your side, we all already bid it, and it's been seven, I've got it.
We probably, I don't know, if the council wants to discuss it now, to pursue, pursue this project, it has gone after.
I'd like to go ahead and go out and bid on it.
Or do you want to wait and do it under the street? I think there, well, you've got some street projects. You want to talk about it then?
We'll talk about it then. I do have a question to the animal.
Yeah, yeah, that's good.
For anybody that knows. So you're telling me there was some railroad ties put in, and they disintegrated and didn't do the job.
Yeah, the railroad ties.
Who put those in?
When the neighborhood was built.
Developed.
Developed, aside use.
So that developer, we actually, when he originally did that.
He used, used cross ties. It was made to fail, and it was approved by the city.
That, that would, that would have been approved by the city. We actually pulled that builder's, or his license, or credit, all of this. And he got out there and started putting something in. Whatever he did, we accepted. And what he did was a lot less than what probably should have been there.
Yeah, it's a bad situation. I mean, it's, it's at least what I remember. It's, it's been a wall of five, five or six feet tall.
Their, the family out there is very concerned for their, their welfare and their financial being, and.
You're, you are certainly in the house, well, I'm sorry to interrupt you. You're, you are in the house that's receiving the.
Yes. So that's why.
The house behind you.
Yeah, the house behind us.
I know.
Yeah, it jumps out, it jumps out of the drainage ditch and goes through their yard.
Well, the house behind you was losing, literally losing yard.
Right.
As the worse it got.
Right.
So I know we were, I feel like, and certainly it shouldn't have been, is it wasn't, it sounds like it was, the urgency to get it. Because I, I told Jeff, I said, just both of them are certain of the railroad ties.
So y'all live on Spruce Street, correct?
So it's behind their house.
Behind their house.
Cul-de-sac.
So the developer, the builder who built your house installed that thing pertaining to it.
I don't know if it was yours or the house behind you. Is it not on their, technically on their property?
No, it's on the.
So you go across the.
Spruce, across the.
So your property goes behind the concrete, the ditch, your property.
Yeah, about four yards. Didn't speak, didn't speak, that's.
So it's your yard.
Right.
It looks like it's their yard, and it's actually.
Right.
Yours.
So behind the mayor is Sandy Johnson's house?
Yes.
Sandy's place.
So we're going to get through, through the cul-de-sac there and go through the rest of the yard to get back to it.
The cul-de-sac on Birch.
Sandy, Sandy is a road up.
Yeah.
Your spruce.
They back up to the cul-de-sac of Birch.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
So the, the next road up is what?
Spruce is what they're on.
They're on Spruce, but the next road behind them is what?
Behind them, below them is Birch.
Nashville.
What's behind it?
Nashville's above.
Nashville is beside.
Birch and Maple Ridge.
Yeah.
Spruce is the northern most road going.
You live there?
Yes, sir.
You live on the corner of Spruce and.
I live right now.
Okay. Are they to the west of here or the east of here?
They would have been back to the east of me, where I live.
And they're on, they're on the north side of the street.
South side.
You're on the south side of the street.
South.
It's about fifteen point foot.
You guys, Ross, do you own, not to get personal, you own your property?
Yes.
Okay, because that was a rent property for a while, no? I thought the birbs on there.
That's on Birch Street.
So if you guys.
Say it. He's black, he owned the property since 2012. That was last.
The one, the one that we've got to go through here.
That's the rent house.
It's on Birch.
Okay. Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
Okay, so he lives in the house on the other side. I got it all together. Yeah, I got it. So we always went through the birbs property, which I don't know if it's still there. Whoever's it is, that's where we're going to have to approach it.
Right. We have. Who we like.
We have permission.
At all possible, we'll find out, or we get the message that crew is standing by. And.
It's just, we, it's our yard, and we're the only one kind of dealing with this, and we've been on the skin of the game for the last year.
Sure, you're, so I was backwards all ago, which I often am. You're losing your yard, literally.
Exactly. Every.
So we're, so the, and I'm not trying to question your thoughts, but I, and we'll come and ta, I want to come and see for myself, too, the water that you're talking, I thought it was running across into that, to the birbs property and causing damage down there.
It is, it's coming out of the.
It's jumping. But your foundation, your foundation, you say.
With the trees that are growing up in the ditch, it's just a.
It's like a river dam.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's like a river dam, and it's just the water going across Birch property.
Okay. We'll discuss it.
I appreciate the time.
Yes, sir, absolutely. I appreciate you coming, I appreciate you being patient. I hate it it's taking this long. If you want to stay, we'll discuss a little bit and try and get permission on it. We will, we will let you know.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you both. Next up is Lori Ransum.
Amy Lori Ransum. Can y'all hear me? Okay, can you hear me?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't want to go, yeah, I got it. Okay, Lori Ransum, 1200 Excelsior Road here in Greenwood. I've got the files on her. I just wanted to take a moment to discuss the efforts to pass the TNR community cat ordinance. I know, I think all of you have read it. Have y'all read the information I gave you? Now, there were some cer, um, some concerns related to the actual ordinance, and we have, I've discussed that with the city attorney and the mayor. Now, I have spoken with Clarksville Animal Control and Fayetteville Animal Services, who both have excellent TNR programs in their ordinances, and both have confirmed that they have no issues passing their, their TNR ordinance. None. They recognize that feral stray and community cats do not have owners, so this has not been an obstacle in their cities. And the Fayetteville Animal Services superintendent, they gave me information about their TNR efforts, and since their ordinance was passed ten years ago, so that's been in effect for ten years for them, they have not had any legal issues arise at all over it. She did say that they've considered being punitive at times, for example, if people were sustaining feeding the cats with no efforts and giving them any of the stay or neuter, which would cause a problem, or if there was an unhealthy population, where there's a bunch of sick cats and they weren't doing anything about it. So those were two things, and I think those would be great additions to put in there for that. Now, Clarksville, I talked to their animal control officer and their H R person, who I guess is head of animal control. The, the animal control officer had great things to say about their TNR and their community as well. Now, they do budget for TNR services, and I'm not asking for that at all. But they have volunteers that take care of their TNR efforts. They have a few colonies in town that have all been TNRed, and they have caregivers, including the animal control officer I talked to on his street where he lives. There are several of the neighbors plus him who take care of the entire colony, and they've had them all spayed and neutered, so. That, that is the, the joy of, much with, when I talked to Fayetteville and Clarksville. So we, we talked about that initially.
I'm glad they returned your call, because they did not mind some later.
Well, I, I didn't call the mayor.
Well, that's probably better.
Yeah. I mean, I went straight to the, the animal control people.
A source, okay.
Yeah, we went to the source, because a lot of times, I don't know, you know, maybe you wouldn't know what's going on with animal control all the time, so.
Sure, sure.
But I'm sure they have, you know, the mayor has, you know, skin in the game with the ordinance. Anyway, so I also want to talk about some information, some misinformation that's been spread around on social media by a few people. And one of the issues is when somebody posts about, I lost my cat, somebody will say, well, it's been trapped. Saying, you know, we, we went and trapped their cat. That's just totally incorrect. I want to invite those people who say that to come and track with us, and they will see that we have a very targeted effort in what we do. When people contact us, they have specific cats that they're taking care of that they want spayed and neutered. If we trap one that's not one of theirs, we let it go. It could be a known cat, could be another feral cat, we don't know, but it's not one of the ones that we've targeted for that. So that's just something I want to, wanted to address, that we don't just go place traps all over the city, you know, and just catch cats. We just don't do that. Also, there was issues about taking care of the cats after they are released. Now, we are against releasing the cats without proper care afterwards. That's just something I am passionate about, so every cat we've worked with that is being cared for. Number three, is a big here for a lot of people, not in this room, but a lot of people. We are not Artemis. We have gone through the lengthy and costly process of being our own entity, 501(c)(3) nonprofit charity. So now, we do utilize Artemis for transport up to Northwest Arkansas for the TNR clinics, but we pay for the spay and neuter services ourselves. We, of course, we're not a shelter. We lack the funds for serious medical care, you know, like broken legs or, you know, wounds and things like that. So we do rely on other organizations, and Artemis is a big one that we, you know, would rely on for that sort of thing. If we didn't, then, you know, those cats wouldn't have any care at all. They would just, you know, they'd be in distress. Let's see. And number, number three, we are not an exclusive or privileged group. Anyone can volunteer, and I welcome anybody who volunteers with us, because it is a lot. It is a lot. Our numbers for this past month, they, since we had the cold, the ice, the snow, and all of that, it's very hard to trap them. And I won't do it in white ones like that. But we did manage to do, TNR ten cats, we placed one in foster care, and one sick kitten was placed into medical care. We did trap one female cat. She wasn't ear tipped, and we brought her in, and she was already spayed. So that's why it's really important to do the ear tip. And so that was kind of a wasted trip for her. She didn't get vaccinations and stuff, but it was kind of a wasted trip for her. We could have taken an unaltered, you know, cat and had that done. So.
She got an unexpected rupture.
Yeah, I was going to say, but now she had a little spa day, so here you go, nice rest. Anyway, but I'm just going to ask you guys if you would please, you know, review all the information that I've given you in the past, the council meetings and stuff, and I would ask the mayor and the city attorney to, you know, examine, address the concerns with all the ordinance that we proposed.
Yeah, for sure. And I didn't keep time, so.
Is that five minutes?
I think so. That's okay. You're fine, you're fine. So I want to suggest that to the council for sure, and they may have already done this, if they've not read all of the material that you provided, I encourage them to do that between now and next month. I don't think they're prepared to necessarily go into something, because we need to look at our own ordinance and see what we need, what we can do. And I appreciate what you're doing, I see your, I see your, your act, I have time, it's, I guess, on Facebook.
You tell me what you.
No, no, I do, so they, they point them out to me, and they're like, okay, are you looking at this? Because sometimes it gets mixed up with other things. So I do look at it, and they're very professional, and I appreciate what you're doing, and this is good information to have. So I would encourage the council and myself, I've, I've read most of it, I swear to you, I read the whole book, I read a lot of that.
A lot of it you don't have to read.
Yeah, okay. So I thought there was going to be a test. Trying to brush that. So if they, if the council can make herself familiar with what, what, and maybe they don't know what we already do, what you're suggesting on the, on the ordinance, and what we feel like is the right thing to do, and especially from hearing from, you said Clarksville and Fayetteville.
Oh, yes.
It makes sense for none of the.
They have.
But I don't want to go out on a limb and say we can just change it, because that's not the power.
Yeah, even Fayetteville Animal Services, I talked to her, they have a colony right outside your building they take care of, so, you know.
I kind of have a colony in my house, but that's a whole other thing.
Does anybody have any questions?
Yeah, I was going to say, do you gentlemen have anything?
Okay.
Ransum?
All right.
Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Appreciate you. Thank you. Okay, that's everybody that has signed up.
We've been done.
Oh. Okay.
Those are.
So we'll get right into the, I'm sorry, the financial report from Mr. Tom Marsh.
Okay. I passed around a couple of handouts for you. One of them is on the topic of threat to tax exempt municipal laws. There's two threats facing the city, and it's that we would be urging paying tax on the amount of money that gets collected for the city as far as investment, some of proceeds of the dollars amount from the taxes that are being submitted. But it's more the cost, the increased borrowing cost due to the people that are the investors, because they're going to be paying tax on the interest they're paying that. And so in order to recruit a good return on that, they're going to be raising the interest rates. And that article goes on and talks about exactly what the benefit of tax exempt municipal laws are, that it mitigates tax hikes for residents normally because of the lower cost of borrowing. So I just wanted you to have that, because Randy James sent this out saying and asking for you to take it to heart, and if you have an opportunity to talk to your councilmen or state reps, this would be the time to do it. If you want to reserve any kind of tax exempt status for, for us, for municipal laws, as you're looking towards getting. And the other thing I handed out to you was an article that came up talking about the state of Arkansas and where we stand as far as the tax structure is concerned, and thought you'd, you'd find it of interest, so that's up there. What I wanted you to see here is the Excelsior Use Tax for February, same period over February, twenty-two point six nine percent decrease from one period of February over last year of February. And that is probably one of the highest reductions that we've had, or declines that we've had from period over period. And as you go to look at January and February, January is November's collections. February is December's collections. Not only those are two of your bigger months because of the Christmas holiday sales, and you usually find November to be fairly high, and those people are the last minute trappers. You see that recovered in the month of February, and that's the distribution of the collections for December. But you'll notice our trends here, we were up, this twelve point five two percentage where we are right now, two months have lost a decline in our revenue. Realize that we budgeted three percent and not for rent income for 2025. That twelve point five two percent is the second largest in this period of reporting that you have here. It's the second largest change, and it's negative. The highest change, percent change from sixteen point four eight coming off of the yields of the stimulus that was paid for through the COVID period. So twelve point five two percent decline. So I wanted to give you a little breakdown as to what made that up. I can get the February numbers now, it's a lot more timely. So the February distribution from twenty-four versus the distribution of twenty-five, these are the percent changes by city that make up the county. And if you look at comparing what the other cities were doing, Harlingen's down twenty-two, twenty-eight, six percent, just one slightly higher in decline than we are. You realize that previous months, I'd say about somewhere from six to four months prior to this, they were in the seventies as a decline, but they do have some new business coming on board with Virginia's, and that's dropped them down to a lesser than seventy percent decline or change. And they're looking for that to even get better as they're progressing and attracting new businesses to the city department. But their impact, when you look at the sales from twenty-three, six million two versus within the city limit sales of four point eight million, that was a decline of sales of one point four billion dollars. Fort Smith was two hundred eighty-three million to two hundred eighty-three three, that's a drop of about a half million dollars. To them, that's pretty much break even. As far as Greenwood is concerned, we dropped twenty-two, twenty-six, nine percent February over February, this period here versus this. And that was an eighteen million dollar sales from December in twenty-three versus fourteen million in twenty-four. We dropped four point one million dollars in taxable sales. That's why the distribution is where it is. So you see that. So you see that when you look at the bottom for the whole county, you realize that LaBakka, Central City do not have city sales and use tax. And all this money stays in those cities with the exception of an ambient fee. So 312 million was the total for the cities that make up Sebastian County. And the 306 million is what they incurred for December of '24. So that's a $5.9 million decline and we were $4.1 million. That's real. So I'll go look now at county. In county, you're looking at a, we had a 1.51% increase. And I did do the deep dive in that as well, but I wanted to show you pretty much just the February, January, February cumulative. Because now we're at 1.9% and I'm going to show you, we ended the year at .8. But we budgeted zero, so we're hovering right about where we ended up the year last year. So there are very little movement. You will see though, that that 1.51% when you look at, you look at .9, February over same period, February was down almost 3%. So here's the breakdown of how that worked. The, if you look down at the bottom, no city sales and use tax, so Sebastian County, Central City and LaBakka contributed to the county sales tax of 1%. But if you look down at the very bottom down here, taxable sales, you see 335 million was the '24 distribution for February, which was December for the county. And you look at '25, it's 325. So for the county, when you add the other three municipalities and, well, the two municipalities and Sebastian County itself, your loss was $10 million in taxable sales from one week to the other. And that, if you remember, I told you that usually you would have an increase if the spending habit was exactly the same year to year. You probably would incur a little bit of a surplus, additional surplus of growth in the fact that there between that '24 and '25 year was inflation. So the product, you're buying it more expensive and your cash is going to go up. So this negates that increase. So if you had the same spending habits, you would have expected this to be somewhat aligned with the '23, yet just consider inflation. So we're 7.45% of this $100,000, which was the 1% of the 10 million. And that's our distributable loss of 7,456. Remember, everybody shares in the pain of what happens within the county. So there's the deep dive. That's what happened. That's why the county is where they are and the city is where they are. If you go back to the city where I had, let me get it right here. This 306 versus 325 is the additional three sales, taxable sales for the city of LaBakka and Sebastian County. That's why this is higher. It should be higher because of what I just mentioned. You go to the combined sales tax, this is just to show you when you add county and city together, we're down 7.52% and that trend is negative. And in the January through February, which was in our December, you're looking at two years now of, for the first two months of the year negative, when we weren't enjoying, we were enjoying a lot better prior to that. So combined, we're down 7.52% county, city to county. I want to go to advertising and promotion, just to show you how that works. It's, these numbers are different than the graphs if you had to read the visuals, primarily because this morning I was able to find flows out of the books. And we had, on the 28th, we had some more reventances and collections for the AMP. The numbers now reflect the actuals. We, for February over February, we were down 5.37%. And advertising and promotion is setting straight up the decline. And you look down at the cumulative, 35,132 AMP is tracking 6.17%. Second one to the left. That's kind of a major trend. You'll have to watch to see how that rebounds. I will show you that the graph is showing that it is coming from our last year, '24s in pretty much the same pattern of collection, just slower sales. That's what it's in from the rebound. So when you go to what the current was, and I told you that. Cumulative growth, 25 over 24, 12.52% down, cumulative above budget. We're down 15.52% from the 3% growth that we budgeted. So this impacts, this is the impact to the city's spend budget on city sales and use tax affecting three departments. Four actually, if you count the lawsuit. County sales tax, we budgeted flat, so pretty much a negative 1% down. It's less of an impact to us. And then when you look at advertising and promotion, 4% is what they budgeted. 6% is what the collective decline was. And then if you look about what our decline is against budget, we're down 10.16% from where we budgeted. So there's your tax revenues. So then I'm going to go to cash flow. We have a beginning cash balance of 2025 of 17,68. We had a net decrease for the month of February of 643,000. We're down for the year 782,000 in cash flow. Current fund balance for all funds is as of February 27th. I closed, I sent these reports out prior to the last day of the month. 16,285, we're down 4.59% in the fund balance. And remember, capital expenditure was frozen. Whoops, let me go back. So the capital expense improvements, year-to-date actual 2025, we've spent $560,000 basically on 15.5, 3.61% so far. The only capital projects that are being worked on right now are those that are already in progress from carryover from 2024 forward. So nothing has been spent on actual tangible capital expenditures or large ticket tangible assets. This is all improvements. That's it.
What, Tom, do you think this is a lag effect of the impact of inflation or? Do you think that?
Danielle sent a photo.
Was it not spending?
Okay.
You're very impressive, Tom. You're very impressive.
Yeah, indeed though, I've asked him if he could lighten up a bit and he said, no, he cannot.
It's just mad.
I could do it with a smile.
The newscaster smiles when she's talking about the tornado. It's about to blow you away.
That's true. Richard smiles when he's giving.
I started to say, do you think it's a lag of the inflation that we had over the, you know, the past year? Or do you think it's?
To be personally honest with you. My personal look at this is that based on what I've been reading from the reports that are coming out on the economy, from my two sources that I read every day, the overextension on the credit has hit a peak where people are now feeling that impact and they're spending their money again, so not necessarily all discretionary that they were doing in the previous years. All the stimulus money's gone, credit max ceilings, a lot of people are at that threshold now. There's some discussion and thought about if the checks come that they were talking about through the government. Most of that would not come back necessarily to the economy, that that would be going to pay down debt. And that would do you no good. So it would do them good, but ultimately that impact to where that would catch up as far as our economy is concerned would be after the debt has been relieved and then they start spending some more. Unfortunately, the immediate impact would not necessarily result to the extent that we think it would. That's just coming from the experts.
Well, I guess I know that the bypass construction has some impact on our tax revenues.
It makes you wonder where we'd be if that wasn't there.
Right, yeah. I guess these, and this really is a two-month lag, so it may not reflect really the cold weather that we've had this past, this past 30 days or whatever.
It'll be January.
All right, anybody else have anything for Tom? Thank you, Tom. Yeah, if you can smile next time, that'd be great. I would say, everybody here, you didn't agree to when you came in, but I'm asking you that when you leave, spend $100 in town before you go home tonight. It's hard. It's not wonderful news. I think it's, we're not going to shut the doors in Greenwood anytime soon, but we need to, we need to come up with a plan. I think it proves even more to be encouraging to grow new businesses coming into town, to try to get some sales tax revenue going and shop local. I know we've heard this before. Years ago, there was a campaign to do just that and we need to consider that. I'd get me close to running out of gas in Fort Smith every time I drive home. Spend some hot gas in Greenwood. That's my little two cents worth. But everybody likes to go to Fort Smith, you understand. Certainly we can urge everybody to buy local. That would be. And if FedEx counts, we're doing our part at my house, I can tell you that. So, thank you. Thank you. Moving on, excuse me, agenda additions. We do have one, the council would agree to allow us this to place. It's number 14 and it's a discussion on phase two of the sidewalk project. Everybody's okay with that? One of that is number 14. So we'll move right into old unfinished business. Been quite a long wait for this, so we'll try to get to it. Number one, the city clerk treasure resolution about the 2025 procedural rules is taken from a previous meeting.
You guys just said that you wanted to see the changes discussed that had mattered before you adopted it, so they're there. All in the shake part.
So questions or comments about the changes on the, they're highlighted. I think Charlotte just said.
And Buddy, I'm not sure that you know this, but there is a portion there that says it is the intent of the city council to consider matters introduced by agenda addition with discussion only so as to give the public time to review such matters. Any actions taken as a result of an added item should be on grounds of emergency conditions only. Any ordinance is introduced in this manner should be placed on first reading only and not made or become effective until after proper public notification.
We're calling it the buddy of the.
Yep. Good use of the.
I think this all looks good.
Good. Comments, questions, documents? This is not a voluntary.
It's just a motion.
Can I make a motion to adopt this?
Second.
The motion is second to adopt.
Brown, Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Sattford?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
Jay Davis?
Thank you. Number two, city clerk treasure, general orders for human replacement ordinance 1-02, procedural rules for special meetings, second reading.
Reason why this is here is because of what was in the other resolution. Because it refers back to this, the change that you made.
Questions, comments, discussion?
And when his vote is in, it has, that's just making straight.
That's what she is.
There's no changes. We're adding it because it wasn't there at all. I thought it would be a good place to make it available. Because if you read the proceeding, it might as a, it might as a kind of, the city way saying he's not ever.
Section two, is it not, we're going to remove the city attorney's ability to call a special call meeting?
No, no, the people's remain. This is just like it was. And then we're maybe we'd have a strike group.
We say.
The mayor, the city attorney is now in, it's only mayor and council. The call meeting is.
I guess in the past, those instances, when I thought he was calling, he was actually calling probably three of us and then calling the clerk and saying, I've got a request to call a special call meeting.
That sounds like calling.
It does sound like calling, but it was from the city attorney.
I know, that's what I'm trying to do. With the shadow light bill.
Back in the day, you're talking about prior.
Prior to Trump.
Okay.
He ain't ever called.
Right. He said he didn't want to.
Yeah, that's because I.
There's no.
I'm just thinking about how Mike would call.
Yeah.
I think you're.
Yeah, he's never.
I guess he was just asking me. I thought he was telling me.
Well, sometimes, yeah. If one of you said that you wanted a meeting, we would have to find out because of that text card. Even one of us, city clerk or myself, could have had that.
I was the mayor.
No, because it wouldn't, he wouldn't be involved because he could call it himself or three.
So is there anything, I think he has clarified this?
Can I make a motion? We approve this by title only?
For second reading?
For the second reading. The motion is second, should approve by title only, second.
Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Rainwater?
Yes.
Tedford? Powell?
Yes.
An ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance number 01-02, steps to procedural for city for special meetings in Greenwood City Council.
Thank you. Number three is Councilman Rod Powell, ordinance regulating spoken warrant mandate for short and long-term rental, first reading.
Three and four, I am wanting to become 13. So I can withdraw three and four and move it down to 13. We'll discuss it at 13. Or we can move 13 up to three and become however you all want to do it.
Do you just need it all together or is that what you?
Right, so three and four and 13 plus a lot of Hunter's housekeeping have been combined. And it makes sense, the council could split it up if they wanted to. But it makes sense to me. So do you all want to move 13 up to three or do you want to move three and four down to 13 and discuss them at the end?
Let's move 13 up to three and four.
All right, agree. All right, so just, I want to start with mine, my part of it. And I'll summarize it for you and then we'll go into details. And I'll have, that will be Stur and Hunter and Sonny. I met with them all afternoon. So to summarize it. If you all pulled out that ordinance. So we're going to change the existing ordinance where we've adopted state code. And when we talk about code, we're going to be talking about three things. We'll be talking about international, we're going to be talking about international fire code and actu. And we're going to be talking about international residential code. And we're going to be talking about international building code. It's going to, I'm going to check all three of them and what I propose. It's going to, I'm going to touch all three of them in what I propose. And to summarize it right now, if everything I, everything I will do will affect multifamily duplexes and triplexes, I'm not touching anything above that, I'm not touching anything below that. I'm not touching anything in a residential, single-family level, and I'm not touching anything in anything that's existing. So, if you have ten duplexes or a hundred duplexes in Greenwood, it is not affecting you. If you are to build a brand-new one, you will be affected, so. If you were to remodel a duplex or triplex in the city of Greenwood, it will slightly affect you. And when I say slightly affect you, if you're to remodel a duplex or triplex in city Greenwood, meaning you go get a building apartment, it's not just a, you're painting the thing and moving on to the next renter, and you have, you're required to get a building apartment for something you're doing, you're going to have to put in monitored tamper-proof, no, I'm sorry, drop monitor, you're going to put in tamper-proof smoke alarms that are hardwired tied and get, they're all looped together, one goes off, all of them go. Right now, if you.
We don't have number three and quarter packets.
There's not, it doesn't exist. You didn't ever get one.
Right. This what you're, y'all should be helping this up, this is exhibit A. This, this is three and four and housekeeping matter, I'm just talking about the.
It's part of the bag on number thirteen, start with the.
Same page?
Okay, so we.
You all good down there?
Yeah.
Okay, so exhibit A. So, if you were to remodel an existing duplex, triplex, you will have to upgrade your smoke protectors. That will, the upgrade would be from just a battery power to, it would have to be hardwired at this point anyway, if you went in to get a permit, but it'll have to be hardwired and tampered with. I Googled them, we sat, I Googled them on Amazon, there's nothing special about Amazon, Jager's, Sonny says Jager's actually has it, you can get a tamper-proof, you can get four of them for a hundred and twenty dollars. Not a big deal, not, not talking, when you're talking about someone's life, that being a business decision. But, if you were to build a new duplex, triplex, you would, if you pass it the way it's been proposed, you would have to put in, and I'll call Stewart up to explain it, and I'll call Hunter up to explain it in a minute. If you were to do that, you would have to put in a NFPA thirteen D sprinkler system. And there's a difference between thirteen D and a thirteen R. That's why nothing is affected by, above, nothing is affected above a triplex, because it's already mandated by IBC, International Building Code, to put in at a minimum a thirteen R. And so, what we'd be requiring is a thirteen D on duplexes and triplexes. Thirteen D, the D stands for domestic. Currently, when the state of Arkansas adopts codes, it adopts codes, and they're all formed from the IBC, but it will adopt IRC, International Residential Code, and it will adopt NFPA and IBC. Hunter regulates IRC, and he also regulates IBC. Stewart regulates NFPA and IBC, International Building Code and National Fire Protection Code. And when they get up there in a little bit, they'll tell me I'm all wrong, so y'all just be ready for it. This is my, this is the way I've got it out. So, ours, all these codes are, all these boards that submit these codes are formed by professionals in the industry, so NFPA is put together by insurance people, architects, fire, fire-associated people, and they make minimum recommendations. They have no authority on their own, and it's up to the governing body of that jurisdiction to adopt it. So, when, when the state of Arkansas adopts NFPA, they may leave out a few things. You know, these people are motivated, the people that are sitting on the board of NFPA, IRC, IBC, they're motivated to save lives and conserve property. When it goes to the state or the people that have the jurisdiction over it, they're thinking of the state as a whole. You know, there's a difference between Fayetteville and Bowles, Arkansas, and sometimes they, and you know where Bowles is, and sometimes they go in and they just kind of pick and choose, and some of these things are obviously motivated by people that have a good lobbying, good lobbying power. They don't want to see some things happen, and that's when they own our congressman. So, those things get taken out. So, one of the things that was taken out of NFPA, that would be what affects me, is they took out, in NFPA, it requires that all single, all single and two-family dwellings and townhouses have a thirteen D, an NFPA thirteen D suppression system built in.
Which is IBC.
IBC. Here's their stronger direction, and that's okay, because, and so, what I'm asking for is to not, and we had a discussion about the single family, and I said, I think we should leave it out. I think it's, I'm just going after the people that unsuspectingly moved to Greenwood and they move into a place that's just not safe, and it certainly doesn't meet the minimum, the minimum requirements of IBC, what IBC is recommending to keep people safe. I think what you'll see someday is the single-family dwellings come up. So, the portion of mine that affects new triplexes and duplexes would add, if you Google it, and the AI generated, it will come up and say it adds about a dollar thirty-five cents a square foot. Another one comes home and says it adds a dollar and thirty-two cents a square foot. So, you built on average, and we traditionally, in Arkansas, we kind of are on the low side of average, we kind of are low, we usually build things lower than average, because average is driven up by New York and California. So, I looked at the International Association of Fire Sprinklers, and they say it's usually done at the minimum of a dollar a square foot and at the maximum of two dollars a square foot. So, in a two thousand square foot house, we may be adding two thousand or twenty-seven hundred dollars if you go with the average to a two thousand square foot house. And I know that, and we're talking about, we're not talking about houses, we're talking about duplexes and triplex, brand-new duplexes and triplexes, I'm adding this. On the, if you were to come in and you own a duplex, triplex, and you wanted to remodel it because you had walls knocked out of it, I don't know what you happened, where you had to come and get a building permit and do more than just painting the place, you're moving a wall or whatever, you're adding stuff, that should only, that effect should only be about a hundred and twenty dollars. Because we're only requiring that smoke alarms be brought in to a tamper-proof smoke alarm, to where the renter can't just unscrew it off the wall and throw it in the corner. And the tamper-proof ones have a ten-year battery life when you buy that. So, again, going over and unscrew it, throwing it into the corner.
When you say tamper-proof, I mean, what prevents them from removing it?
I mean, anything that they got into, I mean, they just have a special little torque bit with a hollow end in it, you know, but you can be, there's people clever enough to get into, and a hammer, you know, I mean, a hammer will do it.
Not as easy to take the battery.
It's just not as easy as twisting off or pulling the battery out, throwing it in the corner and being forgotten about. You have to really willfully get up and get some tools, and maybe find a few special tools that are just not entirely common, but there are tools you could get, yes, and a hammer, so you could take it out. That's probably going to add a hundred and twenty dollars to whoever has to come in and get a building permit. So, what would be the most onerous part of what I'm trying to do is the duplexes and triplexes. That could add a couple of thousand dollars. Now, is that worth, I mean, I mean, I don't know how you put a cost on a human life, to me, that, there's no, there's just no consideration. I mean, we're not talking about twenty thousand, we're talking about between, you know, we're talking about a couple thousand dollar deal. These are people that have not bought a home and have home ownership, these are people that are really depending on us to keep them safe.
Now, when you say suppression, thirteen D suppression, you're talking about a sprinkler system.
That is a.
Alternative.
That is a sprinkler system. I'm going to ask Stewart to get up and explain a thirteen D sprinkler system. Do you mind, Stewart?
You have a R thirteen, which is the residential, and you have thirteen D, which is domestic. And the difference is, is a, some of the differences, but the main one is, the domestic is on a domestic line that's already there, you're putting in, so, that domestic line, instead of being in your floor, is going to be in your ceiling, and there's going to be a sprinkler head in each room or whatever is required. Now, to get a thirteen D license, a plumber, not a fire suppression system company, but a plumber can get licensed to put those in after a one-day seminar, when he goes up to northwest Arkansas, where they offer those. So, whoever is the first plumber in Greenwood decides they'll do that, will be able to put them in. And, and so, anyway, it goes on a domestic system, so it doesn't require all the riser stuff, all the different things that a R thirteen system has. If you go over to, I think the last R system we had here was over across North Lincoln Gate, when.
Bean Place.
Bean Place, where that was at, I think it's fourteen offices there, there's seven downstairs and then seven upstairs, and it has an R, so there is a little room that's set up, you go in there, that's where all the, the rest of the room with all the stuff that goes in there, then it goes off to all the different rooms, and that's because it's more than a three-plex. Anything more than a townhouse, three-plex townhouse is required by code to have a R thirteen. And so, a thirteen D.
Go through the differences again between R thirteen and thirteen D.
Okay, I'll get right to it. So, so the thirteen D is on a domestic line, and it's really designed for residential houses.
You mean by domestic line?
A domestic. So, the thirteen R, or the R thirteen, you have your drinking water line for your toilet and all that, that's a totally separate line than your fire line that will come in on a R thirteen. It's on a totally separate line that goes out and connects. So, on the domestic, your fire suppression line is the same one you're drinking out of and you're flushing your toilet out of, and so, it comes in and it goes in the ceiling, and so, every time someone flushes a toilet, they're flushing the whole sprinkler system, and they're flushing, or every time someone turns the water on. And so, you don't have to have, they basically made it a lot simpler and a lot more cost-effective to put in residences. Now, is that something you can put into, into a apartment complex? Not, but they've made it to where we can put it in anything that falls under residential code, and so, on three-plexes or townhouses and duplexes, it's legal. Rogers has implemented this, and he said, and the other thing is, is it makes it to where the firewalls in those three-plexes can drop down to one-hour firewalls instead of two-hour. It makes it to where you have a sprinkler, say you're having the whole subdivision sprinkled that way, like where we have Lynn, is it Lynn?
Drive.
Linwood, that drive and all those three-plexes through there, it could actually lessen the width of the road, because they're all sprinkled, and you can also put less hydrants because it's sprinkled, and drop the size of his firewalls inside the building.
There's a cost savings.
There is a cost savings. There's a lot of different cost savings because you have a sprinkled house, or a sprinkled building. And so, our biggest problem right now, and you guys know we're, we're having, with the fire department right now, the last thing we can do is put on a full-time fire department. One of the things that would help us out is on these type of house, these type of structures, sprinkler system is going to help us keep from having a lot of fire there, and it's going to make it to where if they do have a fire, one head goes off. It's not a deluge system, where one head goes off and the whole house goes off. Each head has a little filament that's inside the sprinkler head, and when the temperature gets up to certain degrees, they pop and that one head opens up. The homeowner will be able to go around and turn off their system after it puts the fire out. And, or, when we get there, we can turn the system off. So, on a thirteen D system, it's all real user-friendly, I guess you could say, that's a real good way to say it, and a plumber can install it. And as I said, I talked with the head code enforcement officer up at Rogers, and they actually have complete subdivisions that have these thirteen D systems now, and he said the, it took them a while to get used to it, but now the developers and home, home builders up there are really liking all the trade-offs they're getting with it. Anyway, this is, this is one way for us to make it a lot safer for those people that are coming in with, especially townhouses.
And one of these ordinance was talking about a fire ground at every three hundred feet.
Okay, now, that's, that's a little separate from this part of it, some plate I people was wanting to do, we had that.
I guess what I'm asking is, on the thirteen D, you've got sprinkled buildings, you know, the duplexes, triplexes, how is that an impact? You said you require hydrants.
I think it impacts it by about fifty feet or something like that. You'd have to look at the code, any time you have a sprinkled building, you can do a reduction, sometimes to twenty-five percent, and so, it just depends on what size the building is, on what that reduction is. As I said, it kind of trips down, as you start having reductions on things like that. What you're seeing on the three hundred feet and other parts, he basically went in and found some things on some other ordinances where the, some stuff had been taken out and moved because of different ordinances that trumped other ordinances, and that three hundred feet required, and it needed to be put back in there that we, that council noted on years ago. But that doesn't have anything to do with the sprinkler system. So, domestic is the domestic line, thirteen D, and R thirteen is a residential sprinkler that would go for a residence like a fourteen, or, you know, a apartment complex, and so, that's a different, since there's so many more people, so many more occupancies, it actually requires a professional company to come in and install a system for life safety, where if it's just a couple of families, they do, they are allowed, and for a while they weren't allowed in Arkansas, we finally got it allowed, started doing it in Alabama and seeing a real increase in pass saves and stuff like that. So, as I said, it was really designed more for just a single house, but now we're allowing it to be used for duplexes and triplexes.
So, on duplexes and triplexes, what do we require now? So, we would be requiring they put in this thirteen.
Thirteen or eighteen.
And that would just be using the same water lobe, the drinking water, everything, just installing it.
I'm not sure, well, Tim would require a different connection, but it's on the domestic line, so, it's just going to take a little bit, because right now, they probably have to have a plumber, multiple staffs will come down, but as soon as they see it happening, there are, some of them are already coming down from up there anyway to build that, builders building in Greenwood, they're already coming.
On the, on volume three, does it just pertain mainly to, just duplexes and townhouses that don't pertain to anything above that, and that's what volume two pertains to?
So, volume three is referring to IRC, right?
That's correct.
And IBC takes care of anything above that, international building code takes it, right?
It's everything that is over a townhouse.
Everything that's over that would have to have a traditional commercial sprinkler system. And when Stewart talks about, like Rocky Walker built, it has a, an NFPA thirteen R, which is a standpipe, and it's a little more on or song, but there's more than three units in there. And all of this is to give you, give you some time to. You know, and all of this is to give you, give you some time to make in the fire, when I was working on my fire science degree from ASU, SAU, pardon, you know, I think, I think it says a fire devil's inside every one minute. And you configure NFPA 1430 requires 14 fire fighters there in 10 minutes? And that, that's really smoking, you know, give, I guess, but, you know, that's everybody moving. And with that, meeting that NFPA requirement in 10 minutes, that fires 10 times the size of one is probably called in if noticed. And that can be a pretty sizable deal. Minutes are really costing time, I mean, before we get there, we're looking at one triplex on fire, and then we just say, we're baming in it, and we're protecting the two on both sides, when you start packing them together like when we're in this uptown. It's, it's either, I feel like it's either do something like this, and I think the cost is so low, or gigantic fire department, million dollars in labor a year, won't, won't touch it. So, my, Hunter's probably gonna speak, I mean, I had one thing to say, so you know, what I was focusing on is, my part of this ordinance, and I guess y'all figured it out, I shouldn't have announced it, was the section that had Arkansas Fire Protection Codes, one, two, and three. That's me. There, Hunter's gonna talk about everything else, but I wanna read you from NFPA. NFPA thirteen D is the standard for the installation of sprinkler systems in one and two family dwellings and manufactured homes. And it, it's a, it emerged from years of studying, modifying the stringent requirements of NFPA thirteen. So, they were trying to develop something that was more cost-effective to put in single-family and two-family dwellings. Everything above that's the thirteen R. So, that's why they, the cost is down, and they go on in here to say that the average expense to install the system in new homes, not retrofitting, is a dollar thirty-five a square foot. And they go on to talk about in a mortgage, on a 30-year mortgage, it's the price of a cup, cup of coffee every day. It's not that massive deal when we're talking about a business decision on people's lives. And we're not here to make business decisions for developers and builders. We're, we're here primarily for safety.
What is the, the kind of going price on a building per square foot on these new structures?
Uh, that's probably a hundred and fifty dollars now.
Okay, so this, a dollar thirty-five is less than 1% overall?
Yeah. So, it could be cheaper than putting carpet in, and they go and say it in here, it's cheaper, you know, adding insulation to that, it's about above 50 a foot, per square foot, sound average. Installing wall-to-wall carpet, carpet is averaged $3 to $7 per square foot. Kitchen remodel, 25,000 or a hundred and fifty dollars per square foot. Compared to everything else, it's pretty cheap. For us, an advantage is, we get a break for a little while when having a massive, massive fire department. Not, you know, there, there's a point where we have to have one, and if we can kick the can down the road a little bit, financially, we're better off. Especially with your Tuesday column over there.
Jerome's on...
I'm, I'm not asking, I don't know, when we talk about people making business decisions, who's committed to something in Greenwood? You know, I don't mind making this effective December, I mean, January 1, following year, and then we've not really affected anybody. Maybe if they're sitting there making that business decision, and that dollar thirty-five cents a square foot, just like, man, if I'd have known this, there's no way I'd have dove into this. I'm not saying that we have to put it on them now. Like I said, we can make this effective January 1, as far as I'm concerned.
Give them some time to factor all that in.
Right, we can make it effective June 1, I don't care. We're gonna do it for at least three months. I do not want any kind of, the emergency clause has been struck off, this needs to take its time. Me, Sonny, Hunter, and Stur sat down all afternoon, and then we got with the city attorney, and we made sure the city attorney agreed with how it was written, and that it was enforceable, and, and Travis said it was good, and I said, you still got three months if we've got, if we need to adjust it. Two months, if we pass the next review. I'll let, I'm gonna let Hunter take over, 'cause the rest of it is Hunter's, and it's his housekeeping.
Everything that Rod has said is good on him. Uh, like he said, there's a little bit of housekeeping that was going on here, and the largest part of this was the electrical portion, which is what that handout is, that I just gave you all, that was the request of Mr. Tedford. That is Fort Smith's Electrical Local Code Amendments, and two of those, which I highlighted seven and eight, I did transfer over, and that will be on very the back of your page four, under the NEC, NFPA 70 National Electric Code. That's going to pull over, all special appliances that are 120 volts shall be required to be on a separate circuit, like the refrigerator, your microwave, dishwasher, heating, cooling. Some of it already is required to be on its own separate circuit, some of it is not. And then, second change, which is the biggest one, is going to require that any 120-volt circuit that you run in a house for the purpose of receptacles is required to be a 20-amp outlet, in a 20-amp circuit. That will prevent some of the issues that I've been seeing in and around Greenwood from happening again. And that was just a, kind of a nifty way Fort Smith, kind of wondering, amended their, their The rest of it is purely housekeeping, so, you know, moving back to page three, and I'll just work my way down. Under volume one, Arkansas Fire Code, I did not write the ordinance number on here, I apologize, I've hit for too many ordinances in the last couple days. We had thought that this ordinance, 1422, which is the ordinance number, required that hydrants and commercial developments be spaced 300 feet. It was intended to be spaced no more than 300 feet. Well, that ordinance had been repealed or amended somehow, somewhere through my research, I found an ordinance that got rid of it. So, I had contacted Stur, asked him, did you intend for this to happen? No, so we, we put it back in, in the code. Rod did a really good job explaining volume two and volume three, the building code, those were both of his changes that he would like to add. I've got a section in here for the Arkansas Mechanical Code, as you can tell, we don't have any amendments at the time, but I would like to leave that section there, so that if we ever do have, I've got a place to put it. Arkansas Plumbing Code, there are two bullet points on this one. Both of these were accidentally repealed or replaced sometime in the last 10 years, and maybe even longer than that, I think one of them was 2009. And we've been enforcing that ever since, inaccurately. It's going to be, start with the first one, had to have a pressure regulator and a shut-off valve after the meter box. That's, I think that was ordinance 12-19. That has been put into effect by myself on every house since I've been employed here. I think Mr. Tim Posey, if you were here, would tell me that it was still in effect, and I found it otherwise, but the purpose of putting it back in this ordinance was to make sure that we get it back on the books accurately, so that we can continue to lead and enforce it. What those...
Sorry, so we've been doing it, was this one back in the...
You're correct. It, I think it was accidentally repealed unknowingly. I'm, I'm working on some of that, you know, with Charlotte, trying to make some changes and some corrections. The purpose of that pressure regulator is so that the city can send abnormally high pressures in the randomized parts of town, and your personal service lines are still protected. You can control the max pressure that goes through your service lines, which are not city mains, they can't handle 120, 150 PSI. The shut-off valve in that instance allows them to shut their water off to their house and not have to get inside of our meter box.
Where would you have 120, 130 PSI?
Uh, there's several places around town, especially the closer you get to the pump stations, or if you're downhill from an elevated tank, or if you're downhill in general, you're gonna, you're gonna see higher pressures than you would if you were elsewhere in town. We have a couple of places, I don't pretend to know our system 100%, Mr. Posey has stated, I believe it was Mount Harmony, he's on a high-pressure plane, so a lot of houses up on Mount Harmony have, have got an extreme amount of pressure. I'd say extreme, abnormal amount of pressure more than other parts of town. Plumbing code regulates if you can't exceed 80 PSI to a house. The second one is exactly the same thing, just with the super side of it, requiring a super popper, self-operated clean-out and leave valve to be located directly outside of the structure at the lowest point of entry, so that if there was a backup from the city's sewer line, that it will back up outside and not inside of your house. Purely just a cleanup of that, I took that language straight from Fort Smith and Greenwood that shared, very similar language, I actually liked theirs better, so I took theirs. As far as like the first, the second page, you can see the highlighted changes, a lot of whereas was, was altered, I got rid of the emergency clause, and made some corrections to the code adoption section, just about made a little bit. Anybody have any questions?
Is that really that, we talked about on this, is that, you're saying it's gonna be where everybody knows, like, we were cleaning up, that's, that's the spot for those?
Yes. Yeah, and we, we require that now. So, it'll have to have a concrete, I call it concrete going up, and it just sits on top of the ground, and they'd also keep you from running over the lawn door.
On the electrical? What? So, so currently, refrigerators, microwaves, dishwashers are probably not on a separate circuit?
It's entirely dependent on the electrician, they don't have to be. So, you're required to bring in two small appliance circuits into your kitchen to run your countertop outlets, and if you were to decide to run the remainder of your small appliances or your large appliances, you can, you can run up to however much the circuit's rated for. Typically, you're gonna have a home run that comes in, and they might run off that home run for the countertops and catch the disposal, or catch the dishwasher. This is requiring to keep, basically keeping your countertops and your appliances separate.
So, so probably, now, how would this apply to, like, you're doing a remodeling your kitchen, you'd have to comply?
Yes.
That we're not asking anybody who has their kitchen in place to go and start putting...
Correct, yeah.
So, how many, just, two questions. How many circuits do you think on average we would be adding if they had to make that change? Just based on you, how, how many houses you see?
Two or three?
Two or three additional circuits?
Maybe, yeah.
Okay.
And, and some of that is going to be condensed down, a lot of individuals right now run lighting and receptacles on the same circuit, and they, they can effectively combine a lot of their lighting receptacle or lighting devices on one circuit, whereas right now, it's kinda spread out.
And then, most boxes have plenty of growth for those additional circuits?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm trying to think about my box.
Yeah, a lot of the boxes, you're gonna talk to panels, right? One of your electrical panels back in the day were 20-space panels, but, I mean, it's common to see a 40-space panel.
Shred.
They're, they're expansive now.
Mine's high. I'm saying, you know, mine's maxed out, you know, I've got a, you know, a 32 or something like that.
32 space.
And, and it's maxed out, so it would be...
You do have a fair little trap, though.
It would be, but I'd have to add, you know...
A sub-down.
Three circuits, or yeah, or a sub-down to, to my kitchen.
And they do have some creative solutions for situations such as that, and they, they call it twinning. They make breakers that are a double breaker that fit in the slot of one, it's their code compliant.
Hunter, you might explain to them the portion where the pressure regulators will be, perhaps destruction and located at the meter box, unless an alternative location is approved by the city.
Yes.
And that's, that's pretty, maybe that's pretty speculative there, but...
Yeah, yeah, thank you. Were you done with the electrical?
Yeah.
Okay.
No, I wasn't. I mean, I just see where, I guess maybe I see where the microwave, the dishwasher, the dishwasher and the heating unit, I'm saying a refrigerator, does that mean, does that really have to go that much?
They do have quite a bit of drawl with the compressors that are built into those. Most of the refrigerators that I see now are already on their own circuits. They're gonna run the GFCI that controls those back at the breaker panel, because then you don't wanna have to pull your refrigerator out and reset that, that device behind it. The refrigerator isn't, isn't that big a deal, but if that's, if that's one that y'all have issue with, by all means, we can push that off. The residential wire and the second one in that list was the, was the one I wanted to tackle, solving, solving the issue that I was having.
I'm just, I'm just, financially, just trying to get our arms wrapped around it.
Yeah.
So, let's, let's talk about the year of the house built. When did, when would you say more appliances began being installed on 20, on 120, on their own circuit?
Uh, that wouldn't have a reasonable answer.
In a house that was built in 1950, not a chance.
No.
Probably. But, you know, when would you say, like, if you're approaching the community and saying, any house over X number of years old is probably to be affected more by this than others?
Uh, anything post-1990, I would say, that'd be a reasonable date. I think my house that I'm in now is a '89, and it's fairly modernized, electricized. I mean, it does, it's on a smaller end of panel size, but, and I'd say that that smaller panel's common in that, that year, that, that year gap, I mean, you're probably thinking anything over 2000s, 2000, for sure over 2005, you've got larger, modern panels.
At least some of them, but, and these houses from the 80s back, they're only affected when they come in to do, to seek a building permit to do a substantial remodel.
And if they're doing that, they're replacing the panel.
Right.
That's just gonna be a part of the project.
So, it affects split roof, really?
Yeah.
Probably isn't anything else?
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that.
Okay. You good, AC?
I'm good for the first three.
Okay.
And all these, all these are in excess of the minimum codes right now?
That's correct.
And, and all cities are allowed to do that? You can't...
We can't be more progressive.
Yeah, we can't be less, but, okay.
Uh, Sonny pointed out, there was a change that I did make in Plumbing Code, the first bullet point there, and it was going back an ordinance or two prior that I had ran across previously, where the pressure regulator that is normally required to be located directly outside of the meter box, has the ability to be relocated based on a determination made by myself, and that's generally only going to apply if you've got a property that's got a quarter mile long driveway, and if you regulate their pressure down to code minimum a quarter mile away, by the time it reaches their house, they don't have sufficient pressure. Right now, we don't have an option, there, there's no alternative to that. So, what, what you'll see happen would most likely be a plumber show up on site and put the pressure regulator in, either walk in there and inspect it, and after I leave, it's gone, or they remove the guts out of the pressure regulator and deem it ineffective in order to get pressure away. I would just rather have the ability to tell them to put the pressure regulator closer to the house. So, we're still protecting the house, the yard line may be subject to extreme pressure at some point in time, but...
I, I think, I, no builder or whatever, you know, but when you say that, that's a good example, you're saying it's a very long, you know, from the... good example of saying it's a very long, you know, from the, uh, meter box. But to me, I, I, as far as trying to, uh, yes, be a homeowner or whatever, trying to locate, you know, I'm thinking, well, you have to, I gotta, you know, figure out where it is or whatever. I, I would say, if it is, affects the, the pressure drop wherever to the house, I'd say, you know, I'd like to put it in here maybe so much within so many feet from the house, you know, like you said, like it's a hundred feet or whatever, you know, as opposed to just saying it's just that discretion.
What they would, typically what you're gonna find is most everybody runs X service lines, and they're going to be solid length service lines, there's not any joints. So they're gonna run that joint is gonna be as close to the house as physically possible, and the joint is going to be as close as it can be to the city main. So your two locations that you could ever really effectively relocate would be either at the house or at the road. So I'm, I'm really limited in where I can go, but it's just given me the authority to, to say it doesn't have to be at the road if you've got, if you've got an infallible issue. And you're correct, it would not make sense to have it, you know, just randomized wherever. It, it would, it would be next to the house, presumably.
And what, um, Rod said about you, he's, he meant, it's, it's like a term of endearment?
Where did that come?
Hey, I gave you a brighter picture.
It's why he booted it.
He was over it, he just didn't even tell you about it.
Well, the red color was pretty.
Right.
I mean, everything's black and he's, throws up this nice splash of red.
Oh, it's pretty, it's pretty.
True.
I like the true.
Follow the true. Is there anything else? We good for first reading?
Go on, go back to mine. Did y'all have any more questions, Brown? If you go back to mine, if you look at volume three, this is why I'm on X degree. That is written exactly like NFPA recommended. One of the things that's different would be the exclusion of one family dwellings. That's what we did, we pulled that out, the exact language in NFPA, that their recommendation. Uh, another thing we, and the reason, um, I asked that it be pulled out, I mean, that we exclude single-family dwellings for right now. Uh, we visited a lot about it, but I was just kinda going back to the basics of Matthew 2540, just looking at the least among us. And if you wanna build a 10,000 square foot house, it's a building shoddy, if the thing catches on fire, I don't know. But that is another thing we did talk about, for the sake of the fire department. There are some big homes being built nowadays, massive homes, and we just, I just finished a play on one over on Main and Long Bridge. It's 11,000 square foot, and he's outside of town. And I was showing him how the SOS detector works, and I said, that way the fire truck can get in. And he said, of course the fire truck's up from, and I said, yours comes from White Blood. And he said, where's White Blood? And I said, well, they'd be at the base of Springer Mountain, and then there's one over on Highway 45, and he said, that's my fire protection. I thought it was Greenwood. And I said, Greenwood stops at City Limits. And I said, we, we work off water bed, right? And he said, well, what do you think the chances are here? And I said, it's bad. And I said, when they had one down the street that's just right over here by Mallard Drive, it burned to the ground. I said, so when 911 gets called?
Different department.
What?
Different departments are no longer here.
Yeah, I didn't want to, hey, everybody does the best they can do. And, and these volunteer departments are working solely off of people showing up. I mean, we're, we're paid for calling. We're struggling to get people to show up. But we also visited, I'm gonna leave that one, well, we did talk about maybe if this works out, maybe we ought to add these, that 13D, some of these houses over a certain size. Because if we pull up to Walgreens or Walmart, we plug in and drown the place. We just augment the natural pressure, drown the place. If we pull up to these houses that are the size of Holiday and Express, that's a tough deal. We've gotta make decisions. Somebody's making decisions. When they say there's people in there, or we think there's people in there, he's got to say, y'all are going in. So that may come at a different day, where we talk about maybe adding that. Uh, and, and going with the recommendation, the minimum safety recommendation of NFPA.
So are we, are we, are we becoming less restrictive?
No. We, we are more restrictive than Arkansas State Code. We are less restrictive than what NFPA's recommendations.
It's just a recommendation, it's not, okay.
NFPA, all these boards, IBC, IRCN, they don't have the legal, they don't have the authority to make a law. The local jurisdiction would be, in this case, would be the state of Arkansas makes a law. And, and that law applies in Bowles, Arkansas, and Fayetteville. Does it get a lot of attention in Bowles, Arkansas? I would say no. Does it get attention in Fayetteville? Probably a lot more than anywhere else. Uh, but it is the state law, we're doing this in excess of state law. So the other thing we talked about, and we did not ultimately, we talked about added notifications, putting smoke detectors in adders. We decided that technology wasn't effective enough, there's too many false alarms, we were looking at it. I think it's gonna do the opposite of what we'd like for it to do. I think people are really gonna go in there and take that hammer or that fancy screwdriver and go in there and just totally disable everything if there's too many false notifications or that. Uh, we looked at monitor systems, we thought that was a little too expensive, and we, we would gain what we're after by having the hard-wired camper-proofed smoke detectors in these remodeled ones, and having the fire protection built into the singling and, for the duplexes and droplets.
Are the camper-proof hard-wired?
Yes, I mentioned all of them, okay. Yes, and, um.
No, you can get camper-proofed hard, hard-wired. That's what we've done from children's hospitals that don't need to do this. It's, it's really a newer technology to camper-proof. It's a lithium 10, 10-year battery, so when it goes out, it's all the way.
We, we did talk about looking at existing multi-family, making them comply. We thought there's two owners, there's too many of them out there. Uh, it's just two owners to make them comply. We don't really know where all their at. They are a business, but they don't, we don't treat them like a business. These are people that are profitable, uh, but we don't make them come in any, we don't treat them like a business.
Are you talking about multi-family or are you talking about single-family?
Multi-family.
That's, that's my only concern is that we've got a lot of single-family older dwellings that people renting out. I mean, you rent a place like that, you don't, you don't know what the wiring is like.
That is a concern of mine, too, but.
A newer, a newer single-family, when you build that, you, you know.
Right.
You know what the wiring is like, but some of these that are built in the 1930s, 1940s,
You know, I, I think these things should be looked at. If you look at the Arkansas State Legislature, what's going on now? We're, they would probably be pushing what, I mean, they, they're, they're going the opposite way of what I think it would be. I'm just happy trying to get this in. Again, I just go back to, I'm just going back to the ma, the, the basics of Matthew 2540 and just trying to protect the least among us and not going above that. Later on, we may try to go above that. I'm asking that this be put in, put on for first reading by Todd Lowly.
I don't like that motion.
Second?
That motion's second.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Detective?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
James, an ordinance repealing and replacing ordinance is 357-08-01 and 23-02, adopting all current state adopted building fire codes, mechanical plumbing, electrical, and those they adopted or retrostrated, and adding local amendments to the same.
All right, thank you. Good discussion. Andrew Lowly, five, City Clerk traded, replacing, preventing, fourth, national, second, read up.
This is, uh, correcting that, section two, or it didn't say 30,000, it's 5,000, whatever 3,000 or whatever. And then section six, those changes as we're requesting. And I need to get ready to declare an emergency portion. Change it. Anyway, second reading.
Questions, comments, concerns? Charlie, you decided to move on, remove the fire in the area?
Yes.
Making motion, put it on second reading. Second. Motion's second, second reading, Tom.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Mr. Maker?
Yes.
Mr. Rainwater?
Yes.
Mr. Powell?
Yes.
James? An ordinance repealing ordinance number 24-299, establishing, establishing bidding procedures, authorizing the mayor to make purchases and enter into contracts on behalf of the city for all purchases, defining professional services, letting competitive bidding for professional services, and also helping away bidding of competitive bidding on purchases or contracts when not feasible or practical or as may otherwise be authorized by state law, in private services.
All right, thank you.
That law.
Number six is finance, volunteer fire, health insurance coverage discussion taken from previous meeting.
Hey, at the previous meeting, you wanted to know what the impact was gonna be based on the number of, we had an idea as to how many people would be, um, trying to opt for the insurance, and what they actually did when it came down to pay in lieu of insurance as well as the insurance. So I'm gonna show you what it does to the current budget. The current budget's up here at the top, 2025, we have two for actual family coverage, with 16,000 a year budget in the budget. Originally, we thought there'd be, or in the initial conversations, there were 13 volunteers that said they wanted the insurance, and that was 71,000, so bottom line with the year back, we ended up with a current budget. That's what's in there now, $90,000 in the health insurance side. When we went down to the, whoops, went down to the projected 2025 budget, was what actually happened and transpired, and these are numbers that were confirmed again today. Coverage starts for one. JTS Health Insurance, two family coverage, five employees elected to go with the volunteer health insurance, and that's a cost of 46104. The 20,000 that you see there is for nine months, because that's what the actual cost will end up being for 2025. Then we had 15 opt-for the pay in lieu of health insurance at 200 a month. That starts at the first, what's gonna happen is they're gonna get that payout on the first payroll every month. And that'll end up being 27,000 for the nine months. We also had a discussion about the, what would it take, how many new employees are you looking with this program and anticipating to get to, which would be a more adequate staffing? Uh, in talking with Stuart, we talked about five employees if that were to happen, and we said in eight months, or an extra month, and said in May, you bring some more people on at 461, in worst-case scenario, it's another 18,000. And that would be 32 area back, uh, 2,400, so your budget actually saves $5,733 by doing it that way. So if we make and modify the budget by these numbers, it'll reflect 84,000, and it'll make a difference in the amount that's actually gonna be impacting the unassigned general fund. Right now, in the 2025 budget, the deficit was $67,030 for the fire department, and that would bring it down to 61,296. So your 997,000 ends up being a million 3,000. Still 41% decrease, almost 42% decrease in your unassigned, uh, general fund checking balance for the year 2025. What I do want to show you is a full year impact, because you're not gonna go, oh, next year, we're not having it. So remember, this is not a full year, so in next year's budget, you're gonna be looking at assuming no change in the $461. And, and that's assuming that AML doesn't go up in their premium, and that we stay with AML. You're gonna be looking at, given nothing changes in the distribution, these pay in lieu of stay the same, you still have five, and now we said you would get these five as well at 461 for a full year, you're looking at 84,000 becoming 109,000 next year, and that cost will go up by $25,000. So it's gonna be added into what your current, um, costs are for the health insurance on the budget side. So in your operations side, you're gonna be able to consider another 25,000 added in for a full year. So there's your cost.
That's something that you consider for the rest of the city employees, or the, uh, the cost of pay in lieu? And, you know, do you need to speak on this at all? The thing, we went from 13 down to five, you know, I think it did be a, down to, uh, make that offer to the rest of the city employees, could be a savings.
I can open line if you want.
Yeah, that's, yes, please.
So if we were to offer that to the rest of the employees, we would need to wait until open enrollment, because the fire department employees that we added on, they, JTS, AML, opened up a separate enrollment for them, so I can't make any changes for other employees unless there was a qualified event. So if we wanted to offer that to employees, we could, um, open enrollment normally is end of November, first of December, although I don't know that you're gonna have very many sign up, because as far as I know, all of our employees are utilizing the insurance. So, I mean, the only time that I've ever had, when a new employee has come on, it's not, not necessarily needed our insurance, was like one time when their husband had trach air, and that situation has changed, and so now that employee's on our insurance. So, but we can certainly offer that, but I just don't know that anybody's gonna sign up.
We're to ask, correct?
Sure.
I mean, restrictions from, from the insurance company.
No, because this was our own doing, um, on that $200 incentive. But yet, we can't put it out there at open enrollment.
Yeah, I would say this is, that this is an additive benefit and, and the increase, you know, budget. And with the call response rate, especially on medical calls, I, I would, I would just like to remind our fire department that, you know, there should be some type of minimum response. You know, so maybe look at this in the future and see, you know, if we've got folks that are only showing up to work due calls, and they're giving this benefit, maybe that's something we need to consider.
Does the fire department bring back a convention policy?
I just like, you know, if we're gonna get an added benefit, I mean, this is.
I mean, our, our, our normal full-time employees obviously have to show up to work, uh, to receive their benefits, and so I think it would only be, you know, consistent for the fire department.
Call it, response.
I think Stuart has said before that he, they have to attend some of these training meetings in order to stay in the.
That is true. There is, to stay on the, yeah, there is a minimum. Technically.
That's your token. I thought about all.
You have my policy, okay?
Could it be, also, like you said, on call?
Policy.
Chief. Chief, you are.
That is official policy, meaning it's been adopted by the city council, so we could request some of the policy amendments and take a look at them.
You're what to say, chief?
I personally, I know right now we have a minimal amount of training meetings to make. I personally, I know right now we have a minimal amount of training meetings made, and that's been around us for a long time.
What is that, Stuart?
Two for four.
What's that?
Two for four. So two meetings out of six are required.
So the council would like to see some amendment, possible amendments to that policy.
Specific calls, I think, right, yeah, specific calls.
Specifically on calls. The council's invested more money into the fire department and would like to see a return on that money with better response.
Well, like this month, if you look at your list I gave you, we had zero fire calls. So the guys that don't answer medical would have had maybe two or three calls because of a, in a car accident, curbing a side or false alarm. And so we weren't littered with a lot of fire calls this month.
Well, I guess it'd have to be based on the calls that you get, you know, you can't require that.
Right, we don't have, you know, you can't recall, you can't require them to make that call, so start setting fires.
I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I'm just saying, there's only so many, we don't, we have a lot of guys that don't answer medical calls. So we'd like to maybe go back in and say, all right, I did so many medical calls, we may lose some people on that part that don't answer medical.
We would like, we would just like a certain possible amendments to the policy. Some men, men.
Since you've got, I think you told me you have three or four that's getting close to maybe coming on the department.
Hopefully.
I mean, I wouldn't want to scare them off with some brand new, so it would be better. Well, I would like to say, maybe I would say, see what, without saying there, you know, but not necessarily just say calls, but I mean, even apply to meetings, you know, our minimum is two per meeting, but to have, you know, insurance coverage, you know, say that we may say that you have to meet, you know, uh, four per quarter or, you know, eight per quarter, I mean, that's.
I mean, give it a personal award and see if we can bring to you. And something that's kind of really good last time to force them to stay in, so they're going to base file it right now.
We're trying to get recruits, we don't want them off.
That's right.
But we're trying to make, look, they need to earn what we give them.
Absolutely. Absolutely, because it's a lot.
I'm thankful, I'm thankful that they're real trained, that they're coming to training meetings, but they don't show up when they're most needed. Yeah, that's, that's true. Thank you, Chief. Any other discussion? Doc will move on to number eight. Councilman Powell, his new business, Freedom Fest discussion.
Oh, in his.
Oh, I'm sorry, did it? Oh, I'm so sorry, seven, volunteer fire department response incentive discussion, I'm sorry. Uh, and that's placed only by council.
Well, last, uh, meeting, y'all said you wanted to discuss more of what you can do to get them to respond.
Well, we're installed the insurance.
That's a, that's a, that's to attract a new.
This would, this would do with maybe like the things I sponsored, that sort of thing. I think we just can definitely table this and see how things go now. Right now, we've got a lot of incentives that you guys have offered us. And so, uh, right now, we're going to attach a budget in my opinion.
Okay, table it or remove it? Okay, or do nothing?
Yeah, do nothing.
See, I knew I skipped it for a reason. All right, uh, number eight, Councilman Powell, Freedom Fest discussion.
So Shirley called me the other day and said Lance Terry was in front of her and said we're going to free the past and wanted a discussion added to the council and asked me if I would add that. And I said, well, sure. And, uh, and I don't think he's here. And that's really all I had.
I, I see called later and asked to put it on there, so I guess Donald can do it.
Yeah, Doc, or in case if you can come up and, and tell us, you know, on what was your thought process of adjusting this?
Sure. So one of the, one of the first messages I saw were that we were going to have issues getting food trucks to show up if we condense this, so if we condense this only to the dinner service. I should probably also say that I understand that this is personal for some of y'all and that I'm still the new guy here. But I want to, I feel like I'm, it's my job to advocate for our, for my employees and then also for the folks that are out the heat all day. And then I want to be a good stir of the money that AMP allocates to the Parks Department to try to take care of those funds. So the food trucks already have eleven commitments. Vinnie Pie's, Vinnie's pies, the bio is going to do snow cones, show those, Southern Sippin', Fresh, Fresh Start Seafood, Buffalo Burger Company, Kona Ice, Rollin' Smoke, Dave's Iron Skillet, Brooklyn's Beverage Express, and the Indian Taco. And those are not substandard food trucks, they're on a higher end scale. The timeframe change, uh, it was pitched that we changed the timeframe from, uh, we started last year at nine AM and it ran to around ten. After the fireworks were over, we asked that the timeframe change to run from four to ten. And that supports, like I said, there's two ways for, like, we all understand, there's two ways to Freedom Fest. People come typically around eleven o'clock, they'll grab some lunch, they'll hang out for a little bit, and then typically they go home to cool down, and then they come down, come back. And the lion's share of people that you have at the event is from dinner service to when the fireworks are over. So what this does is it catches the second, that primary second wave of people and saves other citizens that show up for the first wave previously and were going home and saves them the trip to where they're able to, uh, come just primarily for the second wave. In our opinion, it would not affect the five K. That race starts at seven AM. Based on data from last year, the last, the absolute dead last runner finished at eight oh eight PM or AM, that's a long five K. Those, so that person finished at eight oh eight AM, they ran a little bit over, or walked a little bit over an hour five K. The vendors were not set up until nine AM to the service, they, uh, there would have been no vendors, or there would have been no vendors on the square by the time she finished or they finished. And that person would have had to, the last, absolute last person would have had to mill around for an hour before they were able to visit any vendors, let alone purchase anything from them. It would benefit the five K in that there would be more space for those five K runners to park because we would not have vendors parking spaces that they occupy. It'd also give us opportunity to set up part of the festival further up Main Street like we've anticipated in the past. And it's very difficult when they have timing or, yeah, timing in the middle of the road. The plans last year were to put porta potties unfortunately up Main Street and it turned out to be very unfortunate. It was not well received by the five K. There's also, this next year, the idea is to have, instead of the eating areas being in between the food trucks on, uh, town square, we will do those eating areas in the Main Street and it would remove some of the congestion from the lines of the food trucks. Uh, on the third, it gives local businesses on the square opportunity to conduct business as usual. There are a couple of businesses that are open until seven o'clock, six, seven o'clock, and typically the night before for Infest, we have to kick their people out to close the, the square down. It also, for the five K, improves, it, it, um, creates more streamlined packet pickup process. So their packet pickup runs till six PM, and if we have the square shut down, those people are not able to easily access the chamber. So the idea, uh, for the, for the time range from ten AM till four on the fourth is that we put, we're going to have a new splash pad by then. We will have a new splash pad by then. We push people to the splash pad, let them, let them partake in some of the parks activities that we have for the day. That's a fun Fourth of July afternoon activity. Also, uh, we could incentivize people to eat locally. So if we had our residents or people that previously came to Freedom Fest go to a brick and mortar restaurant, those brick and mortar restaurants are on the receiving end of business that they hadn't previously had because we had food trucks for the lunch service on the square. On top of that, we're receiving AMP funds for that lunch service that we previously did not receive until last year. Regarding vendors, the food trucks would be set up by three PM, so you'd have those on, uh, town square just like we have in years past. Vendors, uh, the tip vendors would be limited to service or consumer. So examples would include food or drink, uh, items like temporary tattoos, face painting, or nonprofits. And Fall Fest would still be our, would still be our, to where we have the tip vendors that sell, uh, retail items. That way, we're diversifying our events. So we have, we have Freedom Fest that runs from four to ten, and it is primarily the food truck festival. The retail vendors would go to Fall Fest, and that is where, that would be our retail festival. Run the pros versus the cons. Less labor spent on the event, obviously. This would give employees a little extra time, we would not put our, as much strain on our employees. It's estimated that we would have forty percent savings on, over the twenty twenty four budget. Less strain on production, tents, bathrooms, and inflatable vendors on setup time, season setup across the board, uh, just with those areas being less densely populated throughout the day or primarily in the morning. We'd still have activity, activities for the kids. There's no intention of getting, getting rid of inflatables or, uh, face painting vendors, like I said, we still have things for kids to come and do. And that's, that's the idea behind this, is that parents are still able to bring their kids. The cons are, we're changing the events, there's a potential for less attendees, um, and there is potential loss of continuity between the five K and pancake breast breakfast. But in my opinion, I think that if we just pump some extra marketing into those, you would not see any problem off at all. The estimated cost savings for the changes that I'm, that I'm looking at right now is around thirty thousand dollars. Substantial chunk of money. Um, and that doesn't include our labor. In two thousand twenty four, last year, our labor cost was around thirteen thousand dollars. This would save us eight thousand dollars on labor alone.
So you said it doesn't include, uh, labor cost, that thirty thousand, so what, where is the thirty thousand coming from?
It's just reducing, basically it's a forty percent reduction in the events of vitamins.
Do you have porta potties?
Correct. Correct.
So you're not going, you're not going to have the same amount of porta potties?
Just for fewer hours.
For fewer hours, exactly.
I know you said for fewer hours, but you still don't have potentially the same amount of people. And so, uh, you know, you're just going to say, oh, just because it's shorter hours that there's, you're like, it goes often or whatever, I mean, it's like, you're still having the same amount of people.
Yeah, that's.
You have the same amount of porta potties.
That's exactly how it works. Less time, less people going.
I thought, you know, it's really based on the number of people is why we're going to porta potties.
The porta potties cost about three hundred dollars.
Unless you get fancy ones?
Yeah, unless you get fancy ones.
So what are some other costs? I mean, what, what actually makes up that thirty thousand?
So the inflatable cost that, uh, was ranging around sixty seven hundred, that was able to, we were able to knock that down to four thousand.
Sorry, probably committed at four, three?
Three, yeah, yeah. You don't need an, you don't need one of the acts, one of the vans anymore, so that saves you around a thousand dollars. You're saving a thousand dollars in tents, fifteen hundred in sound production. You're saving, you're able to save in around another fifteen hundred in advertising just because you don't have to have as much focus on it. And then ancillary items have dropped under a thousand dollars.
I, that'd add up to thirty thousand to me.
Then keep going if you'd like.
Well, I mean.
Yeah, t-shirts are reduced by another forty percent.
What else?
T-shirts.
All right, so how much is that?
That moved from eleven thousand to five thousand.
Five thousand.
I can just, I can give you this line by line if you'd like to see it.
Sure?
Yeah.
I wish you could have done that presentation that you did for the course. That was really telling.
And so they're saying, so it's a smaller venture and be less advertising?
That's right.
And it seems like that, you kind of defeats the purpose. I mean, that's one of the reasons why it's an AMP fashion is to draw people to Greenwood and stuff. And so it seems like you still want to promote it and, uh, and not, you know, decrease that any kind of promotion by any means.
What should the thirty thousand is AMP contributions, thirty thousand?
It's, yeah, every, everything, this event is funded by the AMP allocation.
So is that money coming back to the AMP?
Did it, did it go back to AMP in twenty twenty one when Amy didn't spend all of it?
You need to redo it.
Well, I'm not asking you, I'm.
You're telling me?
Pretty much. Is that money coming back to the AMP? Is that your plan? Or is that just going to be one of the Parks General Fund?
No, never goes to the general fund. It's all restricted under AMP funds for parks.
So where's that money going to go?
It's going to, well, go onto the, you know, society.
Yeah, so, um, what, this, I have a list of twenty, twenty one items that we could purchase with thirty thousand dollars for the Parks Department.
Well, what I learned is, how did you come about the decision? Was that a decision we made with the Freedom Fest Committee?
I made the decision with, with the Parks Commission.
Well, the commission made a decision based on your recommendations.
That's right.
Right, so how did you come upon this recommendation? Was it based from the Freedom Fest Committee? Did y'all, did y'all discuss that?
Nope.
You just kind of.
Those were recommendations that I made to the commission.
You made that recommendation to the commission?
Yes.
Why didn't you include the Freedom Fest Committee?
Because in years past, whenever I asked these things of the committee, I was asked to go to the commission first.
So why didn't you say anything to the AMP?
Because in years past, whenever I was asked these, quote, whenever I've asked similar questions, I was asked to go to my commission first. They're my, they're my bosses.
They're your bosses, right. And so, but you're, the commission did not ask you to research this to see if there's any cost savings. You're the one that just proposed this.
That's correct.
I guess we're going back to the Freedom Fest Committee to see what they think about the idea.
We, we can cer, I can certainly ask them.
It would seem like they've got some work in the day. Sure you have?
How many times the, the Freedom Fest Committee meet last year?
How many times did they meet last year? From January to July, seven times.
They met seven times. And don't you think that this would have been an opportunity to, or a subject matter that you would discuss with them? That you're, that you're thinking about reducing, you know, the amount of hours, that you're trying to reduce the overall event, that you're trying to eliminate the, uh, the, the vendors that just, you know, uh, just a face painting and some, you know, child, children that fifties, but still we're, I guess you're going to meet from a hundred tents to, down to, I don't know, ten tents or whatever, are you fighting in still tents?
It would be, it would be around thirty tents, and that's exactly how, around about how many people showed up in twenty twenty two? Ten vendors, thirty, thirty five.
In twenty twenty two?
Yes.
What about twenty twenty three?
Twenty twenty three, there was close to eighty.
Close to eighty?
That signed up.
That signed up. So why are you basing it on twenty twenty two when twenty twenty three had eighty?
Because it's the, it's the most comparable visualization of the amount of people on the square.
Is the why?
Is the most comparable visualization of how many tech vendors were on the square.
I still don't follow what you're most comparable visualization, you mean, people could tell it was between twenty two and eighty? By looking, by talking about the square?
I'm saying that if you showed up to the event in twenty twenty two and you thought it was a smashing success because there were twenty, thirty five vendors, this would be very similar to that.
And what are you based that on? And what are you basing that on?
What do I base it on?
Yeah, what, was that, is there a study that you based that on? Or they're not about visualization, you know, if it was to report that it.
No, I'm just, I'm just comparing, I'm just trying to give you a comparison between one year to this number. I'm trying to tell you that in two thousand twenty-two, thirty-five vendors showed up, and what, what these parameters include thirty, it would include thirty tents.
And I just, I'm still not following you though, but how that, how you can make that comparison, you know, just saying, it's something that, that you perceive or that you thought. There's nothing else that you're basing that on.
That's just, those, that's how many people showed up. I mean, that's, that's.
Right, twenty twenty-two showed up, you know, as you said, you know, twenty-three showed up and, or how many showed up in twenty-two?
Thirty-five.
Thirty-five. You had twenty-three, eighty showed up.
That's right. Or eighty signed up.
Okay, eighty signed up. And so, and how many showed up in twenty-four?
I couldn't tell you how many showed up. I think that we had approximately a hundred that signed up.
And so it sounded like to me it's something that's growing, and yet now you're wanting to cut it back.
That's correct.
And you're, and you're basing that on visualization.
That's not what I'm saying.
And what are you saying now?
Basing, cutting it back.
Yeah.
I, because I would rather have Freedom Fest be more of a food truck festival and Fall Fest be our retail vendor festival.
And again, you base this on your own, plus what you're wanting to do.
I base this on mentioning to the Parks Commission, and they, they gave me the green light.
But you had no counsel from your Freedom Fest Committee with this was, you know, you not think that again, the Freedom Fest Committee, that's, their function is the Freedom Fest, not the Fall Festival, not anything else, it's just the Freedom Fest. And so you didn't think that was a good idea to consider then, you know, about what you were thinking about presenting to the Commission, to get, you know, the Commission's buy on it?
Is that, that's a question?
Yes, it is a question.
Like I said, in years past, whenever things like this have been presented, I was told that a committee could not vote on that, and that it is wise to pursue approval from the Commission first.
A committee can't vote on, I guess, exactly what?
Changing an event.
And they're saying, so a Freedom Fest Committee could not vote on changing the event?
That's correct.
That doesn't really make any sense to me, Casey, I'm sorry. Well, I'm thinking again, that's the whole purpose of the Committee is to get their input.
Well, I think if I may, because Casey knows how I feel, and I won't go into very details, I don't think it's necessary, but necessary unless somebody wants to know, but I think Captain Brown's question is, he's said it, but the Committee, and you're right, if the Committee can't vote to change an event, but I think if the Committee was given the opportunity, and we talked, we talked about this a little bit today, was given the opportunity to opine, this is a very used term a long ago, opine on the thing, and then you present that idea along with your own to the Commission for their vote, they're the ones that get to make the vote or vote on the event. So I, you know how I feel, I think it was, I, I would have thought it was important to have the Committee's opinion, at least, and I, and I know, and I know it's personal, we talked, you said it first, and it's personal to me, it's personal to hear what I'm saying back there, who's a big part of the back of the day, and Lance Terry knows that aren't represented, and I'm not going to try to speak for all those folks, but I think, is that what you're?
Yes, I think, yeah, definitely, if the Freedom Fest, if the Freedom Fest Committee.
They make recommendations.
Sure.
To, through you, and then you to the Commission, and hence the vote was made, so that's what I got to guess. Yeah, if you don't mind, and I should add mine, because I can't remember if you, Ms. Brown, would you come to the mic, so, you know, I just have to have you on record.
Thank you. Thank you. I wouldn't say that. My two O three O South Highway ninety-six. It is personal for me, and I get it, you don't want to be there all day, it's a holiday for you, or, you're talking, we have the other ways, anyway you say.
Right, yeah, I mean, I don't.
One, I'd like to see the minutes from the seven meetings that the Parks Committee had, because I know that they requested, when I was on the Committee, to have minutes. It's a lot of work to do Freedom Fest, but I never had a business complaint about what it brought into the community by having it all day. Freedom Fest was about giving away free stuff to kids all day. It was strategically planned to give things away throughout the day to keep the numbers up. We gave hot dogs, a thousand hot dogs, a thousand ice creams, a thousand Frito-Lay chips, a thousand Little Debbie snack cakes, a thousand waters. It was a thousand of everything. We gave away three glasses, flags for the kids, t-shirts for people out there who shot them off with a gun. It was an all-day event, it helped the Pancake Supper.
Breakfast.
Breakfast, sorry. It helped promote all of the businesses, all of the businesses were involved. The things that we did, we didn't have A and P money when we started this, and I, as a citizen, disagree with you changing this to basically what Fort Smith does. Businesses want things like this, and it was a crowded user, but it takes a whole year to plan. We met every month for twelve months. After July fourth, we met in August to plan the next one. When I resigned from the Committee, I left a notebook that had all contacts, dates that you needed to do things, people's names, and the cost of the events. I am disappointed if this happens, and I know people have called me and my husband about it. A and P funded the thirty thousand, other people were denied that money because they earmarked it for you. So it wouldn't be fair for you to keep that money when there are people that were turned down to get grants from A and P, and you just, because what it sounds like, and I'm not accusing you, but what it sounds like is we figured out we could spend thirty thousand dollars on something else that's more worthwhile. And this is worthwhile, hundreds and hundreds of kids had a magical moment, and it feels like the Parks Department is slapping off stuff. We moved our Christmas light show to the Fairgrounds, and we didn't have our Santa House as many days as it's normally been, so now it looks like we're going to get rid of Christmas for somebody else, and now we're going to get rid of all the work that's involved in Freedom Fest. I'm disappointed, and I hope this Council says no to this. It's work, but people really love it. And if you do things strategically, people will stay. That's why we planned out giving ice cream away later, giving the chips away, giving the hot dogs away. Kids came for free. This was something that Lance said, bring us back, from his childhood memories, and we were able to get businesses and volunteers, and getting volunteers and getting donations is hard, that you have to pay me to do it, it's part of the job. Parks is about families and kids and events, and I'm, I'm, I'm sure it's hard, and I respect you doing it, but it's all part of the job. This is, this is a magical thing for Greenwood, and it puts us on the map to say we have one of the largest Freedom Fest events in the surrounding areas. We just do, and I've never had anybody complain about it, and it is work. But I, I hope that the money goes back to A and P, and I hope that they decide who's deserving of the money that you are not going to spend if this happens, and I, I don't want this to end. It should grow here, and I don't know, doing twenty-two statistics for something that you're making a decision on, this just doesn't feel right to me. None of it does.
Anyone else on the discussion?
Well, again, I, I would just like to, Freedom Fest, yeah, that's, Freedom Fest, again, at one time it was a big deal in Greenwood, and then it slowly deteriorated to it was, you know, a, really a non-event. And then, you know, Lance Terry, to his credit, saw that, hey, this used to be a, a big deal in Greenwood, and, and he was the driving force to, to get people involved, and, and again, we had, you know, no budget at the time, and Doug, you know, as the Parks Director, you know there was a lot of work that was involved, and by a lot of volunteers and stuff, and yet we were still managed to give away lots of things, and it was an all-day event, and it did produce, I think, you know, on the map in the surrounding area, we were even, you know, I think, on one thing, you know, Richard McKinney said that we made it into the, the state Parks, you know, event thing, you know, calendar, you know, the Freedom Fest and stuff, and so, and when you tell me that the progression was, you know, from in twenty-three, I mean, in twenty-two, there was, you know, thirty-five vendors, and then twenty-three, more, and then twenty-four, even more, that didn't sound, that tells me it's something that's, that's not decreasing our lack of interest, but it seemed like there's still an increase in the interest and stuff. And so I am disappointed that you did not consult with your, I mean, just for input, that you did not, you know, let A and P know that, hey, this is what I'm thinking about doing, or whatever, you know, and I'm going to bring it up at the, at the next Parks, you know, Committee meeting. Because I really do think it is important to Greenwood, it is a big deal to Greenwood, and I would like for it to continue to be that way.
Mike, I'm sorry, thank you.
I'm just saying, as an announcement, I, that's what, you know, my opinion is, that it's a stage the way it is.
Sure, and I, I don't know, I mean, I do kind of know some things, and Tom and I talked this afternoon, and then we look at ordinances, and, and by the way, send us bells here, I promised Cindy that I would not throw this under the bus in public or anything like that, I just want to say what I said about Casey, and we confided, confided in with this information prior to the Commission voting. At the end of the day, and I think we're all, whatever happens, whatever, whatever way we pursue this, or is pursued, and say we, it's a city event, whatever way it's pursued, I want to hopefully say that everybody will come together and will make this an event special no matter what. So there's that.
And it, and it can be, I mean, it doesn't.
The event doesn't have to be excellent just because it's six hours shorter.
Right, no, I, I was going to ask, Mike, you want to speak? I'm sorry.
Yeah, I would like, yeah.
Just give you an opportunity, if you'll come up.
Sure, Mike. Mike McCowles, I'm chairman of the A and P Commission, you know, I got two opinions. I just want the Parks to know that no matter what y'all do, we're going to stand behind you. But on the other hand, personally, I think it's a travesty, it's what's going to happen to the Freedom Fest, I think Kimberly's right, it's going to snowball down there. But as the A and P, I mean, we're going to stand behind the Parks, whatever they decide to do, we're with them. We are looking at, you know, I know Rod in A C sits on the Commission with me, and we would like to see that, that money come back to the A and P, because there's a lot of grants out there we have to turn down. I mean, other than that, I mean, we're going to help the Parks the best we can, but we're going to relook at things now. I think we give them too much leeway and what they want to do with the money, because I think it's spent on things that it shouldn't, that we weren't anticipating it being spent on, just like shovels and, and walking off at their mind with our A and P money, it shouldn't go to that. So we may rein that in a little bit. I would like to keep it easy on them, because right now they have it easy. We give them forty-five percent, they put it in account, and then they spend it on what we hoped they were spending on, which would be promote Greenwood, instead of them having to come every time they want to buy something with a grant.
You did that because I used to come every month.
That's right. So we made it easy on them, but I'm afraid now that the money is just going into that black hole. So we may pull it in, they may have to start, everybody asking for a grant every time they want something. That way, as Commission, we know exactly where the money's going. But other than that, the Parks, we're behind you guys a hundred percent. Whatever you decide your Commission, you make the rules, so whatever rules you make, good or bad, we're with you.
Well, you really wrote the political sense there.
All right, thanks, Mike. So Casey, the ideology behind thirty, thirty thousand dollars in savings is that we could potentially have something that residents or visitors agree we could use three hundred and sixty-four days a year as opposed to one day out of the year. And like I said, there's a list of twenty-one things I have here that are thirty thousand dollars and below that can be used in the city of Greenwood every day of the year and still have benefit for our residents or potentially bring in people into our community to spend money here. To me, that's what the A and P tax was, that's what A and P, the money for A and P is meant to do, is to bring people into this community.
And again, I think that's something that you should sell to the, to your Freedom Fest Committee, I think you should also sell it to the Council and the A and P Committee before you just single-handedly say, this is what I'm going to propose, and I'm going to, you know, justify myself. Understood.
Cindy, you don't like your hand.
Our chairs.
Chair, Chairman Tate is back there.
I would not want to. If you want to, Brandon.
Thrilled, I was just thrilled too.
I'll need, I'll need you to come up front, sir. Sorry.
Can I get my address?
Absolutely.
All right.
In case we need a toilet paper.
Brandon Tate, one four nine Conley. We were just presenting this information last week, last Tuesday and everything, and the way it was presented to us, it, it was a savings for our Committee and our community. Also, looking at the budget, we were thinking of ways that we could save money, because we're just not getting a lot of money coming in. So that was one of our thinkings, or at least one of my, let me rephrase that, I cannot speak for the rest of the Committee, because we just don't have a lot of money coming in, so we thought we could use it for that. And having the project used for another project that could be used, like he said, three hundred and sixty-four days a year instead of just one day, we saw that. And I understand, I grew up here in Greenwood, I came to the Freedom Fest, but I'm the person who comes in the morning, goes home, because I don't like the heat, and then I come back in the evening to watch the fireworks. That's just the way I do things and everything. So that was my thinking, making the day shorter, so that people can come in, have dinner, there'd be more space on the square, not so many tents up and everything, be more real estate, real estate for people to sit, come in, enjoy the music, and then watch the show, the fireworks show. That was my thinking on the entire presentation. So that was my thinking, so that's what I've done. Cindy, do you want to say anything?
I'm just, was, want to say that I'm just actually kind of deciding when it was presented to us last week, because over the years, and I've been around a few years, back years before Lance got hold of it, and he put the money to it, and we had all the same problems that I think you still have on a lot of stations, just from what I've observed. I know we had problems, we had directors of the past that busted back vendors, because it gets hot in the middle of the day, and they have, and they leave, they even, I remember Tammy talked about setting up, making them sign off that they would stay there for the whole day, just to get them to stay through all the heat. I know years ago, we had problems with crowds, we went all the way in the middle of the day, I mean, that's just the problem of time, I mean, if you got that kind of heat, you're going to have that, that lull, and people are going to leave. And when Casey presented that, and, and keep in mind, we had just heard the presentation you heard, and he was not smiling when he gave it, so that was all in my mind, and, and when Casey presented it, I thought, great, I mean, this has always been a problem in the day, we can focus on the rest of it and make it something great, and I, I just didn't see an issue on this one. But that actually. Um, but that, actually, that was when we first heard it. So I don't think we had a chance to communicate with the AMP. I certainly understand we're responsible to them and what we do with it, that we always have been. That's not yet, I just...
You'd like to go on?
Great, thank you.
Go. Might go ahead and move it first on the funding, if that's okay? Just so you can get an understanding as to where it was and where it is. Um, it is a free event for the citizens because they don't necessarily have to pay to come, but it's not a free event. This event cost the city, when I first came here, it was averaging about sixty thousand dollars all in. It averages right now, the cost last year was right at one hundred and fifty thousand dollars. That's what this event cost, all the costs associated, not the AMP side, the total all-in cost. When you add the fireworks, which started at ten, then it went to fifteen, now it's twenty thousand dollars a year. That twenty thousand is in that one hundred and fifty thousand dollar. When we first started, the AMP side was, when it was under the AMP budget, it started at about sixty thousand. That's what the cost was for the whole event. Last year it was eighty-three thousand dollars. And, um, you, you know, I, I know you'd love to do it one better, one better each year, but the forty-five percent pays that. And then all the other things that is also in that AMP budget, which is, are you cutting back on your Christmas on the square? Are you cutting back on the, because you have to, you have to live within that budgeted forty-five percent. And as the AMP drops, so does the forty-five percent. So last year they actually overspent, and the Parks Department had to kick back in somewhere in the neighborhood just under six thousand dollars, back to make the AMP, Parks AMP money, zero. So they started this year with zero money. So all this they know about, the Parks Commission knows about, they see. Uh, also, this report goes to the AMP Commission and uses it. So you know, they give you a recording. By, by ordinance, they don't have to because it's donated random money to them for their full control. Um, there's obviously knee-jerk reactions that you could do, but right now, nothing says this has to be a permanent deal. It could be, you could change it next year, you could also take it back and say the Freedom Fest is a city event, and it's funded by the general fund. Right now, I also showed you where the general fund is. So you've got some challenges right now. And I think we, we should set aside and we should say, okay, I understand why now it's happening. And I think economic value added is what I was trying to tell you. We're trying to say that there's things that would, you would get a goodwill, one-time good feeling and a great thing to do, but then the next day you're bashing you on social media again on some other issue. But the point is that if you could do something that would benefit them long-term, then you're doing something that would have more economic value given back to the city. It's a hard sell, it's something you have to really think about, right? Now, your emotions are what's getting you because it's near and dear everybody's heart. But when proposed to the commission, that's something that is a financial fix for what he's looking to add. All these other items, that would be a nice thing to do. And we have another one on their agenda right now that they're looking to get, um, sponsorship funding for, which is the summer program for the kids. That's coming up in a couple of minutes when we get into the new business, more of the new business. I think it's actually two, two more next. Um, so I just wanted to give you the, the idea as to how much this really financially costs the city for, for a one-day event versus something that's already...
So, so to give us an idea of some of the other costs, you know, you talked about the fireworks, their, their employee costs?
So a hundred, yes, a hundred thousand dollars of that comes from paying something from the actual cost of the event, plus the fireworks, which are also added into that. And then you have a labor cost. And the labor cost is something that they're paid for, like, for instance, the firemen that sit there all day long for however long it is till three or whatever, when the trucks are theirs, they're being paid. That's not free. Same thing with the police department, as they sit there, they're being paid along with the additional work that the street department has to do because they're getting overtime. Because we as a city treat holidays as productive time. So anything they work in addition to that is not, is paid at time and a half. So you have to add that salary cost back in to get a true cost of what this Freedom Fest actually runs the city. If that wasn't there, that cost would go away. You wouldn't have this.
And again, that's what I think a festival is, it's a one-time event.
I understand, you have to be physically responsible too.
And that's, that's why we have a budget, you know? And, and so, yes, you live within your budget. And so, uh, yes, it has been going up every year, but that's because our revenues have been going up every year. Because it's, it's not, it's not an amount, it's forty-five percent, like you said. So it's forty-five percent of whatever's brought in. And so, uh, and you're right. And I, and just saying, but also, uh, as we're, just like at the beginning, we had no budget. And, you know, we relied on, you know, the, you know, the, the community to, uh, to be creative and to, you know, to, to get donations and stuff. There's nothing such that we can't do that again too if we see a, a shortfall. Or sort of say that, that go out there and, and, you know, solicit, you know, for people to, uh, businesses to help participate, you know, in this and stuff, you know? Uh, give them recognition, you know, on the back of the T-shirts and stuff, just like we did in, in years past. And so...
These are all good ideas. This is your current budget for the Freedom Fest up there. That's wound down, thirty thousand dollars. That's the budget you approved. So that was approved by both the commission and the city council. So it's, that's your cut right there. That's, that's your current budget. So he's got a certain Freedom Fest for fifty-two thousand, and that was eighty-three thousand last year. For all this.
All right, he approved it, you know?
So he's going to have to live within that.
And so, well, there you go, he has to live within that. And then again, doesn't mean that he can't, you know, go out, just like we did in the past, you know? Is, you know, say, you know, hey, you know, to, to go with a shortfall, we're going to ask for, you know, more, you know, community involvement for our businesses and stuff.
These are good suggestions. I just wanted you to make sure you read the ordinance there because that's where the change would have to be made. I gave you an option. One of the options is it goes back to where the city funds it totally through the general fund. It takes it totally out of everybody else, and that would also free up the money for AMP to grant it out. The AMP also has a strap a little bit themselves because they, uh, committed a hundred thousand dollars to the splash pad, three hundred thousand dollars a year, for five years, you've got to do that. So that's also a way in order to grant money out. So, uh, yes, it was very, I was at that last meeting where you denied certain ones because of funding, you know, issues. And that was, that was a hard pill to swallow, but I'm trying to balance that some way.
It's not like we're, we're trying to say, you know, uh, why, why we can instead of why can't we? You know, and so to me, we need to, again, think outside the box and say, you know, uh, yes, you know, uh, Casey's, you know, uh, good in, uh, with the social media and say, hey, you know, we're going to need, you know, more help this year, you know, because of maybe financial constraints or something, or we're going to have to make it a little bit smaller. We may not have to get that, may not get that big headliner like we wanted to. We just have to rely on local bands like we had in the past. And so there's lots of ways to, you know, to, to approach this and still keep it an all-day event.
I'm just giving you, I'm not the one that makes that decision, that's the commission. But what I wanted you to see is what the money is. And I wanted you to understand the bigger picture here. So that's all I'm trying to do. So, yeah, it's not a free event.
And yes, when Parks presented this to us, you know, they didn't say, hey, this is a thirty thousand dollar cut. You know, they didn't say it was eighty-three, we're going to fifty-three.
I'm showing you that that was...
But yeah, it was, I see, you're showing it right there, yes. At the time, they didn't say that it was a thirty thousand dollar cut at the time.
Okay. It's a thirty thousand dollar cut.
I do have Hunter to interrupt. I know Hunter's had his hand up all night, I'll get you two to, also if you want to speak. Well, let me, let me get Hunter right quick here. He's had his hand up, he's tired of holding up.
All I've got is the electrical at the square is burdened. We have exceeded what we can grow, not had paid for anything. I've got to ask for money later. But we have outgrown the square. So you're talking about going all day, he wants to go half a day. We can't grow more than we were last year. We, we don't have the electrical capacity at the square to physically grow anymore.
Granted, though.
That's all I have.
We don't have to shrink it.
Yeah, it, it needs to shrink the, to be reasonable, what that shrinkage looks like, that's not me. But my aspect of what I do at, at Freedom Fest is electrical oversight the most part.
And only one.
It's, it's all day, sure, the wrenchers, making sure that this food truck's got power. And it's progressively in it, getting worse.
And I would say, I'd add to that, come back when I was the Parks Director, that wasn't so much an issue because not every tent wanted electricity. They do now.
Oh, it's like, they're required.
They got a fan.
They got a fan, or a cooler, or a teddy bear stuffer.
Teddy bear stuffer, that's right.
That was a big one last year.
I understand, I understand.
Yeah. And that's all.
Thanks, Hunter. Chief, if you want to speak.
Generally, a hesitant to go, I agree. I told him to his face that he should have reached out to the committee. But I will make two more. This body asked, not asked, but tasked the department heads to cut, find ways to cut them uh, because of what Mr. Coniston showed. I think he took it upon himself to find ways, you know, what, what causes or what career he was in to find this. I think he took his ass with him from this body to looking for ways to cut them. The second part of what I was going to say is, I've been around, I've been a part of these for a long time as well. I, I've seen this Kim, uh, Mike, all of y'all volunteer for years and years. Last year, it was me, Casey, and then, you know, the volunteerism, like, the fire department is gone now. Uh, you know, whatever reasons. But that's just the truth of it. Not a lot of people that's volunteered down there like everyone. So that's two aspects of it.
Thanks, Chief.
Well, that was Hunter.
Thank you.
Hunter, you and Casey last year. I, I didn't work last year, I, I worked...
I was going to say, I think you know what, she went to the lake.
No, I didn't, okay.
You don't look like...
Well, I'd like to say, you know, uh, I appreciate Chief, you know, I was talking there and stuff. Apparently, you know, this was before the, uh, reduction, you know, was passed upon citizens. This was already given, you know, in a budget that we already approved. And so, again, it was not come to me that we were reducing it by thirty thousand, I guess, at the time over previous year.
Is this a done deal?
But the statement is, we have a budget, we need to live in our budget, and that's why we're trying to be as creative as we can, you know, with the budget that we have.
Is this a done deal or is there opportunity to revisit this? That's what I'm trying to hear.
The commission, I will say, if I may, behalf of the commission, they are in charge of said festival. It is in their, it is in their ordinance that created the commission. They have, they have, I don't know if it says fall festivals.
Fall and complete control.
Is it, is it specific? I, I read it today too. Was it just Freedom Fest, all festivals?
Yeah, it does say, you know, it is, it's, it's a Parks special, so it's, you know, they have all of it.
They have...
What ordinance number is that?
Ordinance twelve...
I read it, but, I mean, I know for sure that they are in charge of said festival. So is there time for this to be taken back, back to the Freedom Fest Committee? They have discussions to be brought forth back to the commission. I'll just say what I think. I mean, at one, and I'm, you know, I admit, I'm, I'm that old guy that likes things left alone. And, and by the way, the middle of the day and it's hot, I get that. Casey appropriately took reminder to Danielle to tell me that I die, I typically almost die at about three o'clock in the afternoon because, but, but that's my own fault for wearing costumes and whatnot. But, uh, so I don't know that, I don't know that that time, I'm not going to say all that because I'm, I'm, I want to be supportive before it ever happens. Uh, that sounds politically correct, hopefully. Uh, I, I would say, I mean, I don't, he could bring it to the committee. It's, it's been advertised, let me say that, as you probably know. Uh, the public is reacting. I've not kept up with it every day. I know there's been, made a lot of comments, good, glad to hear it. And then there's negative comments, as all things on, hey, Greenwood, what's happened? So I don't know if there's a takeback, if there should be, or, or, but according to ordinance, it's, it's the, it's the Parks Commission's baiting. So unless there's some change to that...
I don't know, that's been revealed. There's twenty-three, twenty-three ninety now, I don't know if that part's in it, I don't know.
I commend, I commend Casey for taking the initiative.
Oh, I, we get ways to save money. I told you, I think, you know, if we have Freedom Fest Committee, it probably needs to be discussed with the Freedom Fest Committee. But I do commend Casey for taking the initiative to, to look at ways to save money. Yeah, I'm the same thing, I'm the same way. At one o'clock, when it's a hundred and ten degrees, I'm going to go take a sweat break. I'm going to the house and suck up some sweet air. Uh, and then I'll be back later. My mom and dad will still be there dancing when I get there.
They are.
Uh, but, but I'm going to get out of there. Um, and so I, I fully understand, you know, saving money where you can save money.
And I feel, I tell her, I'd go tell everybody, but I, I'm disruptive and I'm, we, messy. Like, I like to try things. But I'm, I might be disruptive, but I'm not dishonest. So I was, there was no part of this where I was trying to be shady or pull the wool over anyone's eyes. I thought I was doing right by going to my commission first because they're my bosses. So I was, I was by no means trying to bypass any kind of systems.
But you did.
Okay, and I can take that, I can, I can certainly take that, but it was not my attempt.
I'll get you, Kimberly, a second, let me get Brenda, I don't want to grab your hand up first.
I'm Glenn Martin, I'm on the Parks Commission, well, I guess, the second year is for, bring on some laws. Um, I wanted to say, when Casey brought this up to us, we immediately thought, oh, gosh, thank goodness. Not because there's anything wrong with tradition, everyone enjoys going to the, the Freedom Fest, but for exactly what you're talking about. There's that lull in the afternoon. And there's nothing that says that the fun run can't happen, the pancake breakfast, everything continues to go on. Maybe we find a compromise and have some other organizations do some activities during those morning hours into the early afternoon before the city takes over. There's, there's definitely things that we can do to make sure that this is still a great event and something that our town is proud of. But those afternoon hours are very poorly attended. Um, I came last year, I was there at two o'clock, there was hardly anyone there. I'd come for the run, no one was there, no one, none, no one in my family wanted to come with me, so I went myself. It was, I mean, you could almost count the number of people there. And then we came back for the fireworks and there was a huge...
I disagree with that.
You disagree?
Well, we said the fire department, that, that bounce around full of kids all day.
Wow. But it, it gets really hot for the kids too. I mean, I don't know, there, there really weren't that many people. Nonetheless, you know, the commission felt it, it was in the best interest of everyone that was involved. The vendors weren't making very much money. You know, there was, Casey had done a survey to the vendors to say, hey, is this worth your time? You know, being out here all day? The responses he got back were, you know, overwhelmingly like, we really don't make that much money. Um, so there, there has been a lot of consideration taken into this before Casey brought it to us. He presented much more detail than what he's been able to say this evening. But, I mean, we are, I think, I can speak for the rest of the commission. I mean, I think we'd be open to, you know, some suggestions and, and, you know, what, what you feel is, is going to be lost by cutting the event down, you know, from whatever, nine hours to six hours or twelve hours, however long it is, long, long. Um, so please, you know, I mean, if, maybe, you know, offline, if you want to send some, you know, comments to Casey on, hey, if we just have this and this, then we can work with some different organizations to kind of, you know, fill those gaps.
Thank you. Who else? I didn't get you another order, if you would say, for the recording thing.
And this is not a negative about having commissions, but it does concern me that, and I don't...
not a many people are on your Parks Commission. It seems like the commissions have no accountability or responsibility to the council, and you are the ones who elected. So, if, you have no say so in what Parks Commission is doing, so I have ten people who are unelected by me, I'm saying ten, 'cause I don't know how many, and it's not a negative that y'all don't work hard.
It's six.
Six, six people are making decisions for the citizens of Greenwood for parks, that you guys have no say so now, and that doesn't feel right to me. I feel like if you're gonna make a decision like this, it should at least be brought to the council to go, what is your feeling, do you approve of this? Maybe the commissions are having way too much autonomy anymore and separated from the council, and council ultimately should be making these decisions. The commission should be bringing this to you, as a commission, you've thought about things, but ultimately, it should be your responsibility and your decision, and it's our taxpayers, and you are responsible for finances, I think, right?
According to the ordinance.
That's what I'm saying, I feel like.
We are considered, we are the, the control of the finances.
The council funds the commission.
We are in control of the finances.
Okay, you can, you can say that all you want, that ordinance says that you gave, as a city council, complete and full control over that aspect to the commission.
That concerns me.
Not, not, well, we can choose what you want, I'm just saying, you can have the city of Greenwood fine, your option is to repeal that ordinance and do away with the commission.
That concerns me.
Or adjust the budget next year.
That's up to the commission. Now, you can, you have.
We not hold on the budget?
You do. You don't want that budget, but I don't know if you're required to based on that ordinance.
If you're not, that really concerns me, so I'm asking maybe the council rethink some of the abilities of any commission to be able to not have any oversight by you, when everything should have oversight by y'all, as being responsible for giving funds to any commission or any department, your oversight, you're in charge of the finances, and now it feels like six people have all the oversight in this area, according to you, and they're by laws, according to the ordinance, I don't wanna get in an argument or anything, I'm just saying, all of a sudden, now what I'm hearing doesn't feel right. What I'm hearing is that six people have all the power over a huge amount of funds, that the A and P gives them a certain percentage without oversight, you're just, like you said, they're not having to go for grants for anything they want, so now it feels really uncomfortable.
So, it's, I think commissions prerogative to have oversight if they want to.
That's serious.
And, and I've written both of these, these are all things that I pushed, when I wrote the ordinance for the parks, AC voted on it, voted for it, I wrote it, and it took a long time to get it through, I actually tried it two different time periods, once was turned down, the first time I tried it, but the second time I tried it, it passed. Passed probably because, partly because I had the advantage of having a protection for who's now mayor, and so that's why I had more support the second time I tried to vote for the commission. Parks Commission, it, it's not entirely, as you say, that it's written in there, it's packaged in state law, we've adopted that section of state law that allows for Park Commission, and there was other things I've added to it, but it's primarily state law, and it's, and by state law's design, it's to be autonomous, and that's correct, and that autonomy, that's a great word, provides autonomy.
It's close enough.
It, it provides them to be removed and protected in a way, and it also eases the burden on us. Now, ultimately, the city council of the city of Greenwood has ultimate control of the parks. Ultimately, we pass the budget, and unless the budget's passed, there's no legal expenditures.
Is there a requirement for a councilman to be on that commission, or to be at a liaison? Because we got to, we got a councilman on the commission, so it's not like we don't have communication. I think where we've all went wrong here is just simply that the Freedom Fest should have been brought into the fold on this.
I don't think they're voting first, I think they're just.
The councilmen are not on the Parks Commission actually, it doesn't have a way of.
No, that was by state law, a councilman could be on the commission, but in the ordinance that I wrote, it eliminated a councilman from being on the commission. At the time, it made really good sense, I still think it makes sense today, and, you know, there's other commissions that a councilman can be on, there, it's required by state law for two, two council members to be on the A and P commission. Uh, we do have liaisons on the Parks Commission, which is Mr. Brown, and, and that's good, but it was designed, originally I designed it so it had it on from the administration, and I still agree with it, I still agree that it's the right thing to do, and we're better off as a community for it. Uh, the A and P commission does, it's well within their right to ask for accountability for the money they give them, and they could withhold that, and they, and the A and P commission looks at people every day, every time we have a meeting, and we can't give them enough money, uh, and that's their prerogative, and I sit on the A and P commission. Uh, I disagree with you, Kimberly.
You wanna be the first or the last?
No, 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 and I think the Parks Commission does a great job.
And I'm not saying they don't, I just feel like what we've gone to, well, protection, like you said, initially started this, may have, might have gone a little too far, if there's no accountability.
I, I disagree with you, but I do agree with you, if there is a shortcoming, there's obviously a lot of people very passionate about festivals and about the parks and everything the parks does, and they don't seem to have tapped into it as well as, and I'll give Doug some kudos, Doug really was able to tap into a lot of that when he was Parks Director, and I've never seen anybody tap into that to the level that he has. It seemed like the square was more vibrant in Christmas, and there was, uh, the Santa Claus deal went longer, and he had them lined up, and when they missed, he was the Santa Claus, it seems like all the festivals were, were a little more with it, and, and, you know, I admit, Doug, we have our back and forth, but I really think he was one of the finest parks directors that we have.
Not such a good mayor.
And we've had good parks directors, but I think the Parks Commission does a fine job, and I think our community's better for it, and I one hundred percent agree with the ordinance that I wrote and I authored, and it took a long time to get it through, I did two attempts. Uh, you know, I had my feelings in the beginning, when I first, I tried to put the Parks Commission in place first, and then put the A and P commission in second, and my, my thought process was, I was trying to copy Parks, where we just turned around and the A and P commission had one meeting to give all the money to the parks. That is not what's happened, and I, and I'm on the A and P commission now, and I looked at that thought process as flawed, I was wrong, and A and P commission does a lot of good to the community.
They do, and I just hope they don't do like checks anymore, I hope that we don't just automatically give a certain percentage of our A and P money to parks, that it should be divvied out as everybody else has to do it, anybody that goes A and P and has to fill something out, that should be how it is.
The only problem we have with that, Kimberly, is it's hard for the parks to budget their yearly expenses, that's, that's really the drawback on that.
I understand all of this, but this feels funky to me.
Yeah, I feel funky all the time.
Kimberly, I, I also, I disagree with you, but I love you, you know, and one thing the parks is missing that was your passion, when you revolved down on the square, I missed that, and I really think that there's a shortcoming on the Parks Commission, is they have not continued to tap into what Kimberly Brown offers.
And just had communication, really, everybody just kinda needs to talk together, that's the problem, started it, there was no communication.
Does everybody know who my, uh, sorry, I'm trying to bring back that.
Add one more.
I'm tapped, so, good discussion, obviously, I think there's some very, I know there's very passionate people in the room on all of this, or we wouldn't be here discussing it, so I appreciate everybody's input. Is anybody, I don't know where we're headed with it, I can't bring any polls, so, there's no votes, I don't think, at this time, for sure, so everybody's kinda had their say, are we good?
Yep, it's that Freedom Fest discussion, and that's what happened.
That's, that's, anyway, it was a good discussion, I appreciate it, and I appreciate the civility as well, too. All right, you sir have waited a long time, and, and you should. Yeah, we're looking at you, Colton, and, and so now you have a taste of what can happen. Are you still willing to serve?
Yes.
Okay, now that's a brave man, or.
Well, he's already been to the parks, he's not bad.
So, we shouldn't put you out of number fifteen, to be honest with you, uh, just, I noticed Trent last, preacher, you know.
He did comment that it was a lot more exciting than he thought it was gonna be.
Oh, really? Okay.
I said, well, you're welcome.
So, number nine is Parks, confirmation, Colton Redding, Parks Commission alternate member, so Casey, you wanna address whoever?
Uh, Dr. Kate Headley has resigned from the Parks Commission, that vacancy was filled by Bobby Price, and now we have, uh, an alternate, another alternate that is going to fill the position, this is Colton Redding, um, I think it was actually at last meeting, we discussed those vacancies, Colton is in dirt work business, and would be a gigantic asset for us, he does way more than dirt work, but dirt work is probably your specialty.
I just, I just build trails for, build trails for all of it.
Nice.
So, Colton, can you give us thirty minute opinion of what you think? I just, I just learned a lot.
More than you wanted to know.
I got another question. You related, you're afraid of. Home.
Where did your vote go?
Well, Loretta, okay, so we went, maybe from.
I come to that knife, I guess you just add here.
But I really, I really truly appear.
Appreciate you, well, you sir, thank you, and this council confirmed.
I'm making a motion, we confirm.
Thank you. A motion to second to confirm.
It's Brown.
Yes.
Maker.
Yes.
It's Brian Water.
Yes.
Jennifer.
Yes.
And Miss Brown.
Yes.
I.
Anything we've done all night, and no, you may not go until we. All right, uh, number eleven, I'm sorry, number ten, I almost skipped you, uh, resolutions to establish summer recreation program and amend the budget. Ms. Martin.
Hi, it's Megan. Um, so, the commission has come up with a plan to do more recreation, provide more opportunities for youth in Greenwood, and we'd like to host some summer recreation camps. We're proposing, um, four separate week-long camps that will begin during the month of June, uh, that'll be my big three Thursday, um, from nine to three, early drop-off and late at hours available. Um, we are currently looking for various corporate sponsors to support the program, um, but there will be a small tuition, um, as well, um, that tuition will, um, is dependent on the amount of sponsorship that we get, um, but we felt having a tuition is, even if it's forty dollars, which would just be ten dollars a day per child, um, it, it at least puts some stake in the game, so the families aren't like, oh, it's fine, and we just lost a spot for somebody who really wants to be there. So, any questions?
So, what kind of activities?
Yeah, thanks. So, we are going to highlight all the fun things you can do at Belt Park, so we'll have pickleball, basketball, stand volleyball, soccer, baseball, and we'll end the day at the splash pad. We'll use the pavilion during the, um, lunch hour, so the kids can get out of the sun and cool off a little bit, till bring us that lunch, um, but they can use that space, um, so it's really gonna hopefully showcase the park and show families that may not know that we have all these different things, and especially with the splash pad, we knew this summer, we thought it was a great way to really, you know, put a spot there.
Who, who is in charge of the children?
Right, so we are going to hire camp counselors, um, we'll have high school kids, college kids, apply for those positions, we will also hire, um, coaches, so there'll be, uh, coaches assigned to each sport, um, so if somebody knows a lot about basketball, and they wanna teach basketball, they'll be at the basketball court all day, those kids will rotate through, they'll be in cohorts, so there're probably about twelve kids, and each camp counselor will be in turn with those twelve children throughout the day.
Background checks?
Yes, yes, um, Danielle has made that very important, so we'll have background checks and door screenings for anyone that's hired.
Ping pong tables?
Ping pong tables, well, maybe in the pavilion.
I've got some ideas. Just thoughts, there might be funding available, you can think about fishing, nature hikes, those time walk tip-offs, there's, helping, they offer for, for seasonal recreation.
Okay.
Not necessarily for soccer.
Yeah.
Volleyball, but, you know, links out there.
Well, another thing that we're talking about, related to the camps, that, um, we are talking about doing, like, like kids fishing tournaments, um, and, like, pedal kids, and some different things like that, but we would like to use, like, if there's kids that need to come earlier in the morning, we would like to do hiking during that, that first hour, if they get dropped off at eight, and camp doesn't start till nine, we'd like to do hiking, and I don't know if we can make that, like, enough to, to qualify for a grant, but there, I'm sure there'll probably be twenty, thirty kids that, that need to get dropped off.
Did you have your hand up for the hiking instructor, Mike, or player now?
I'll do that, though.
Yeah, so, you know, all, all of the, all of the tickets citations that are getting written by law officer around the state, none of that goes back to the agency, all of those go to county conservation districts, you apply for a grant, whether you're, you know, the, uh, fishing derby, or an activity, outlaws, um, you can just lie with that county for, for that grant.
My husband had said he wants to do, like, a bird, um, not bird watching, but kind of like, bird education, and like, teach kids the calls, and, and how to spot different birds and stuff.
I'm not even thinking of custom.
Any.
So, I'm having to fill out that application.
Yeah, okay, well, we'll come to you, maybe just make sure.
Mike, did you have a comment on?
Just, I'm on Mr. Blue here, what about insurance, what if a kid gets hurt, is the city liable?
For immunity.
For immunity?
For immunity.
There you go.
So, so, good. There's really not a financial impact to the city, you're, you're spending, you just need authority to spend money that's given to you by the Belt Park Foundation.
That's right, all the, the money that is donated by the different sponsors will be run through the Belt Park Foundation, um, then Casey will request a grant from the foundation for that amount, um, essentially, there will be no impact to the Parks and Recreation budget, but it could have a positive impact, and there could be an excess, um, depending on how many sponsors we get and that sort of thing, so there may be a little cushion to be able to do some of these other activities that we don't charge a tuition for.
I'm not volunteering, Kenny Sunday, to help you with it, because he would hate you for that, but you might check with him about teenage helpers, is he, he has those folks out there?
Yes, I've already marked it for you.
When I, I think this is a worthwhile project, I think you need to, you know, get our kids something to do during the summer. Honestly, it's very worthwhile. On the other side, I can't help but point out that you're saying that these are the hours between nine and three, which are kind of the times that you're wanting to eliminate from the pretty fast.
This is intriguing, so. These are, these are non-holiday days for adults that have a morning. We're trying to find them things and pictures.
There was bottom there, you know, nine to three. Second, a motion is second to approve.
Brown?
Yes.
Brown Water? Shepherd?
Do you know where to keep that?
Yes. All right, thank you very much. Number eleven, financial resolution to the special grant political specific to Axon. Chief, are you addressed already?
I think this, I can't. I think this house, y'all keep that. If my family, if my family, if you all voted to accept the, the, uh, the...
The grant.
GPS to confirm and protect you then. Y'all voted to accept it, we needed to write a resolution, therefore.
I imagine it may be reasonable.
Well, sir, I'm by the person that approved yours very much. A motion is second to approve.
Mr. Brown?
Yes.
Maker?
Yes.
Brown Water? Shepherd?
Thank you, gentlemen, thank you, chief. Number twelve, the councilman bow, somebody knock on that door.
Why don't you just go in there and just...
No, let him do it. Would you do that? HR, HR, would you do that? It's going to be a discussion about the history.
You want to just do your...
I'm going to go on to, you wrote a lot of things and come back to that. Okay, we're already done, third time's done, we go to fourteen.
Fourteen.
Sidewalk phase two discussion.
There you go.
Kind of, there we go. I got a hundred percent of Jeff all in there. None of them probably bulked out.
You were gonna talk about the money side of it.
Does she have a resolution or not supposed to?
No, we don't.
Okay. I wouldn't...
Well, it's coming back.
Things I could just invest in. We moved on to the whole thing, boy, you're passionate.
I think I had told all of you last meeting or two, an estimate that I got on sidewalk phase two. It was wildly expensive, about two point three million dollars. That's about two million dollars more than we have. But I tried to get crafty with what we could do, as much money as we had. So, we're looking at phasing out a phase and just fitting the phase to the financial capability of the city at the moment. So, what you're looking at on the first page is phase two A. I like my phase As, phase two A. So, that is going to go from go or vast little, where our sidewalk infrastructure currently stops. It will get you all the way to a fashion of insurance. And it will also provide pedestrian access across Center Street, across Coker Street, to Harps and the police department property, which allows us to utilize existing infrastructure and not have to construct a bridge at this moment. So, if you get yourselves orientated, you'll see the, the bridge crossing the creek there. And it's got a yellow line going across it. We are not connecting that bridge. That's too costly at the moment, so we're going to explore those options later, later on down the road. The path of travel is going to be across Center Street to Harps with a signalized crossing, traveling back to the intersection of Coker and Old Hackett. So, then people can cross and use the old bridge there that's already got a cantilever pedestrian path. So, that, that was our cheapest route to still maintain public safety and be able to get people around our creek system through this area. It's kind of a pinch point there. Does anybody have questions about the alignment before I move on to numbers?
Is the, is the, everything is highlighted in yellow, is that all the proposed sidewalk?
It is, with the exception of where the bridge crossing is.
So, there is gonna be a sidewalk on the police property and Harps?
Harps. Harps and PD property?
Yes, sir.
I think the only thing, Sonny pointed this out, and I think I had missed it. When, when you get to the corner of Old Hackett and Coker, right there at the PD's property, technically, I think we're gonna have to have a crosswalk that cuts across Old Hackett with a little bit of a landing and then a straight crosswalk to get across Coker. I can either pursue going back to the engineering or rely on in-house. I think that we could probably handle a crosswalk or two in-house.
Okay, and I've got one addition, I'd like to have a signal, push-button signal for pedestrians for that intersection. And we'll do, we'll do the pending crosswalks.
Two little bit.
Is that?
Absolutely.
Well...
Old Hackett and Coker?
Yes, sir. To get across Center Street.
I'd like to get across Center Street.
Yeah.
Center, Center signalized.
Yes. Gotcha. That's our most dangerous point there, is crossing Center Street.
So, we will coordinate with the light that is there now. I'm intimately familiar with the type of system that will be utilized, but it will be based on pedestrians. So, walk up, whether it's a, I think they have a hog system, or if it's a direct push-button, that will identify when someone's...
So, it'll be kind of coming out there?
It will be.
At the base of the, uh, the caboose?
So, we're...
Pretty close.
Yeah.
Yeah. It's gonna be kind of walking, walking.
Yep, category.
It's gonna be a change. This was the, we looked at a couple of other options and you have to be so far from the intersection to have another light. And to meet that, put us back to a point where it wasn't feasible to then run sidewalk back this way. So, we had to view that light, or our option was to pursue a bridge crossing the creek, which I got an estimate on Denver Street Bridge, you know, seven hundred fifty thousand.
Two thousand and nine, I believe.
And so, is the, I guess, are we gonna stop traffic a little bit further up from where already stops coming eastward?
Yeah, I think we have to move the stop line there closer to Harps.
Okay.
Just have the stop line and then we'll have the crosswalk after.
We got easements for all this?
I've already obtained all of the easements. This won't actually fulfill all of the easements that we, that we obtained, but I like to, this fits the budget for what we can do.
Did we change engineers, since Crafton told us?
We did. In order to get off to some tracks, uh, projects. And even, even then, I will say that it's taken quite a while with Crafton and they've been a part of it.
I'd say too, if you ask if we got all easements, we obtained easements to do what we're asking to do. Plus, he's got some left over for next phase, phase B. But one spot in particular, maybe just one on this, we didn't have to do it, we didn't get an easement. We're going out, often, we're going out toward the highway. I just want to make clear that we're doing something a little different to, to have to keep them getting easement. Is that fair?
Yes. I can follow you on some... I can expand.
I think so, because I think, I think, I want them to know what we're, what we're doing and because later they'll hear. So, I'd rather them know. Thank you, sir. You're never coming back, are you? I mean, I...
There's no repercussions, but... So... It's Bulldog Roto, right?
Yes.
Bulldog Roto, we attempted an easement to know available. So, we explored other alternatives on how to get around this property. We, we looked at the most non-invasive methods first. Going around the back of this property, going along the creek, trying to do everything we can to stay out of his way if what's not gonna happen. So...
And then Bradley Oliver.
They were willing to negotiate, but it was not too much of a...
At high cost. We, we went through city attorney. We followed the processes and this was the easiest path forward. So, what we're doing, sidewalk has to remain fourteen feet off the back of asphalt if there is no curb, per highway standards. If you have a curb, then your standard green space is three to four feet, five feet, you know, you can actually go on the back of curb. It's a deterrent for cars to not roll over the curb and run somebody over. So, what we're going to do is curb gutter that section of the roadway, which most of you know is a on-street bull in. It's going to limit his access. We're, we're gonna give him two main points of access to get to other parts of his parking lot. But that was, that was what we would do. That was, that was it. We attempted all form of negotiation, I want to throw that out there, we, we did not, not attempt to negotiate. The monetary value, it was approved and authorized by Mager and city attorney. So...
And we don't intend for this, sorry, we don't intend for this a judgment to, you know, any form or fashion harm that business, the capability to do business. It will take away the ability to pull in from anywhere. It'll be like any other parking lot, these cars together, you'll have to enter here and exit there.
Yeah, it'd be safer anyway.
So, that's what we're doing, is we're putting in a curb and providing a curb cut.
Correct.
We are. Now, most of you know his parking is off-street. He doesn't utilize the gravel lot, which I think half of it is actually our property anyway, on the caboose side. And then the other portion of his property in there by the snow cone shack is limited in space.
And I think this project created, if you didn't already say it, we're gonna afford, we're gonna put a driveway or an apron where it's just gravel now. So, he's getting that. That's what you should know.
Yeah. That's the best that we could come up with with the terms we were given, pardon, we were built.
Well, it's like that, I mean, just on behalf of the sidewalks, you know, to me, it was like when, you know, my pal was trying to, you know, initiate trails and the city guys, ah, everybody's gonna use trails and stuff. And then as they got put in, I saw more and more people using trails and I see more and more people using the sidewalks, so I...
There's people walking up and down Center Street all day long now.
Yeah. By the way, sorry, by the way, this is not, you might think is a local owner. Gentlemen, we're in this, that's not who we're dealing with. There's an owner that's set with the building. He's not here.
Almost am, right. Correct, it's a little different. Yeah. So, don't get... Thank you for...
Yeah, you're welcome. I thought that's probably pretty important.
Yeah.
Very important. Although it's still, yeah.
Neither party are gonna be excited. Uh, I would like to say the next phase that I have intended for this project would be the other bridge crossing. People have been walking across parking lots, the entire time these parking lots have been here, they've continued to do so until we had the proper funding to make it a designated walk path. But getting people across the two bridges were the most impactful, in my opinion. So, that would be my next intended phase of construction, once we get this one completed. I'm seeing where we're looking for confusion. We're gonna get this one done.
You said we're gonna get it done, what's your time, Mark?
Uh, as soon as Tom can give me some money. In all, in all reality, though, we've, we're at ninety percent plans. This reducing the scope down to a mere portion is gonna expel that. I spoke with Crafton Toll last week and she said that if we don't already have the grant money funded to us, and that's about a two-month process with TAP. So, I'm waiting to hear back that. Have you, do we, do you know if we have that grant funding or...
I would be managed.
Okay. So, we were approved and that paper is in this, so that was a twenty twenty award.
I'm sorry.
TAP grant funding for that.
Do you know if we were officially given that funding or do we still need to go back and request that?
We don't have any funds.
We don't have any.
Okay.
It's been approved.
Okay. So, that'll be for two months.
So, reimbursable for you.
Yeah.
So, we gotta spend money to get money.
Yeah.
So, out of this three hundred and eighty thousand, there's potential that we get two fifty back, or is it phase?
Two fifty.
Phase A?
Two fifty.
Okay.
If you didn't just say, I'm sorry, that RDOT is all in on this, they're good.
Yeah.
They, they appreciate the fact that this has turned into a two-point cent a million dollar project when it was originally guesstimated, I like to call it, at six hundred thousand. And so, it's literally what, what it went to over however many years it's been approved. And so, they are understandable. I was on, called her on the phone and she goes, this makes perfect sense and we're good to do this, so everything's good.
Uh, second page has got a breakdown for preliminary cost estimate for this project. And I did go back a second time to Crafton to have a finalized budget. And she said that everything was included in here, plus what you'll see in the red, which was just the addition of fifty linear feet of coker. That was overlooked on her preliminary cost estimate. So, it was a fifty-five hundred dollar addition to this budget, bringing the total to three eighty.
Well, I love the idea of going around the police and Harps.
I think it was a fantastic idea to incorporate some of the PD sidewalk over there. And that just increases walkability to emergency services and it was a good move.
This was a two, two thousand twenty award, five years later.
Yes, sir. The good, the good news is of this, since we're phasing this out, I've got the engineering done. So, I'll be applying for TAP for twenty twenty-five to be awarded twenty twenty-six. And I'm going after the max, which is five hundred thousand, and that's due maybe in April. But since we've already got the engineering, as soon as the projects are awarded through TAP, we should be ready to turn it around pretty quick.
Reiterate that we've got a great relationship with RDOT. The more we do, the more we do it correctly, the more they're apt to approve what we ask for in cases. They're not saying anything.
Makes good work, good presentation.
But as far as bridge crossings, now that we own Center Street, there'll be any kind of bridge cross move, it's, it's gonna be up, up trial unless we get some type of grant money.
Still, bridges, RDOT still hasn't said so on those bridges.
Yeah, they do.
Yeah, they, they're expected by RDOT. So, they're doing this, we have that separate pedestrian bridge we can't attach.
Elliot actually got us a labor and authorization to do a cantilevered on the Denver Street. That's what we're looking at right now.
So, again, I attribute that to a great working relationship. I mean, that, that wouldn't have happened a year or two ago, probably, well, five years ago for sure. Hey, Hunter, has anybody reached out to, to Harps? I mean, I'm seeing that there's no, I mean, our sidewalk's gonna go parallel to the road. They may be interested in pitching in to connect their parking lot to our sidewalk.
Oh, yeah, potentially. I hadn't discussed that with them, but I did speak with corporate property acquisitions and we conversed for about a month or two on this. And it was never mentioned, but I can approach them with that idea.
We know people will be cutting through.
Yeah, they will.
Yeah. If we can finalize, that's a really good idea.
This, that, a lot of folks, that's what they're gonna be crossing the road to be going, if they're crossing there, they're going to the grocery store.
That's a good idea.
That's the, what's that, is that called? Yeah, I'll take a slide.
Yeah.
Yeah, we'll have to see how it works out with topography, it's pretty steep incline there. I don't know how far the sidewalk comes up on the, on the slope there, but yeah, that could definitely be worked out.
Yeah.
Now, I did want to identify that this does have an access to the trail on the car wash side. It will have a, an ADA accessible ramp down to the trail. So this will effectively provide an individual that is walking along the trail, if it's inundated with water by the bridge, a way to get around safely.
And they can access the sewer line going across.
Yeah.
Don't mess with that tree that's there.
Did we plant it?
No, I see planted.
So yes, we're taking it.
I will leave it in the middle of the sidewalk.
A little roundabout.
Roundabout.
It's a natural, natural wall with a tree grows in Greenwood. Uh, Tom, you want to hit the financial side with the sidewalk fund, this?
Yeah. The cash flow issue is not, not existing if the funding comes back from RDOT with the two fifty. I think the way they did it in the past was it's the draws and it's submitted. And then we pay the draw and they reimburse us the percentage of that cost up to the two hundred and fifty thousand. So I, I don't see that being a big issue. Sidewalk fund is already budgeted to be funded by the street department fund, you've approved that. And a hundred and fifty thousand, it was designated to be for the sidewalk project when we thought it was only six hundred dollars. No. But it makes perfect sense and the money is already in the account. You're looking at an out-of-pocket of a hundred and thirty. So you're, you already have a hundred and nineteen in the sidewalk fund before that hundred and fifty gets transferred. So you'll end up with about a hundred and forty thousand dollars residual still in there for the next phase. So it's funding is our.
And none of this, this is all sidewalk, refresh my memory, not, not having to strap some parking lot, that's part, that's in that other section.
Every, every bit of this is all.
Okay. So later on, we'll come to you later with.
But we don't need to approve this additional five, five hundred that you're talking about?
No, it's still, that was calculated in this.
Correct.
I was bringing to your attention, I don't know if we need, Tom and I discussed this morning, I don't know if we need to make an official project or if we're good.
Well, technically it is an official project, so I can, I can air market for that out of no hard dollars.
So we're good?
Yeah.
We're good. Y'all are happy with the alignment?
I will.
See you, Paul.
Good. Thank you, Hunter.
Thank you.
Did Danielle assist you at all this time?
Um, always. She is a resource.
We're leaving, we're leaving that, she gets phase three. All right. That was fourteen. We're back to twelve. Councilman Bowles, especially visiting the street, that's twenty-two.
I know. It, it's about the reason at first, I'm, when I was so late, I kind of rushed through it and now it's ten thirty.
Ron, if you would allow me just to give a small overview of my answer to the questions that you already had. The Spruce Street project was the first one, I was going to talk about that anyway. So that was already in the plan and hopefully to release that money. Since we haven't had bids yet, we don't know for sure if the two fifty will cover. So there is the chance that I'll have to come back to you on that. That's an engineer's estimate, that's, that's what we've been running off of.
So that we, that's money we shouldn't be spending and it's not your fault. It's part of planning. That developer should not have been allowed to do that.
I agree. But now, now we've got a mess.
Yes. We just let, we, we, once we accept the mess, that's what we end up with. And, and he was in trouble. We pulled his privilege last season, said he could not legally work in Greenwood and he wouldn't, and then we allowed him to do that. And I say we, I'm talking, the council pulled his privilege last year, administration letting proceed and go ahead and do it.
Not this one.
Not this one, but he has and still is and currently sits on our planning commission. And we're the ones dealing with it.
What's, what's the background of? You were here.
Thank you.
So we're not, we're not talking about the administrations at fault for not, I'm talking about the guy sitting right here. And now years later, spending twenty times what it would have cost to do it right. And we've got people who are waiting.
And we wouldn't have.
And this has nothing to do with you, it has everything to do with the administration, when he was planning director.
And I still don't know what we're talking about.
We're not talking about.
I'd say that too.
We're talking about Michael Ridge, that bitch.
Talking about the gentleman that was here a while ago about the drainage.
He's the one that's bought the house. And the, the wall that we accepted as good construction is now falling, falling in.
On good layers.
Anyway, it, it's nothing we can do anything about, I don't know any expenditure.
So, um, you can move on. Okay. So what I was going to also tell you, you know, we have two different plots of money. One is what we refer to as the operational budget. So we've got that fund, then we've got the city sales and use tax. So right now, operations and capital come out of the, the street fund, which is funded by fuel tax. It can only be used for street purposes. So we have that, then we have our city sales and use tax. So what we decided during the budget process was that we're not going to start any new projects until twenty twenty-six and we don't know where the tax election is on that. We were just going to go forward with the projects that we had already approved last year. So that, those are the ones that we've been working on, but the only one that hadn't started yet was the, was the Spruce Street. So we, we deferred that for a month because we need to talk about that stuff. So. It's, it's in that tree where the two trees are.
Number ten ninety-eight, go straight over.
Yeah, right there, over, pretty much. By the way.
Right there. Right there.
That's, that's where there's a, a V ditch there.
Between the two trees.
Yeah.
And the gentleman that was here earlier.
He lives in, yeah, one oh five.
Yeah, yes.
So that wall runs actually partially to the house to the west and a house to the east. So it's partially behind this house.
Yeah.
And it's also partially behind this house. So. So the plan is to, we're going to have to first reinforce what's there, pull it tight out and then build it back up. And then we can remove the vegetation from the V ditch, start a club. There's several huge trees in there. The problem is those, those are the only things that are holding up that wall right now.
So just for kicks, right to where you're perfect, go back to that corner. So that water is supposed to be going. Showing, yeah. So where that is a literal like this.
But up here. Right here is a ninety degree. Water doesn't necessarily like to go over this way, it wants to go this way. So there's some other drainage work that's, that's probably going to have to be done right there. If we can get this clear, get in here and get this clear, then we can take care of that drainage a lot better. This is, this is the house we're going to have to go through the yard to access our drainage. Yeah.
They still want.
To clarify, Ralph, Ralph Coleman was the developer of that.
Oh. Okay. Yeah, thank you.
They just sold for a billion dollars.
So where I was going was, um, with the, with the project money out of this, the city sales and use tax. That's, that, those are the only projects that we're going to have for the rest of the year. So the RDOT grant has been awarded to operation out of Fort Smith. They're going to, they're going to start real soon, they're, they're going to wait for the weather and you have to have forty-six degrees in rising before you can get asphalt. So, uh, we'll, we're happy to now, if we don't have a lot of rain there. So we'll get to go on that. So you'll see some real progress from center all the way back around to Denver.
Hi Jeff.
Yes, sir.
Going back to that drainage.
Sure.
Are, are there those trees that are, that are blocking our view, are they going to be, ought to be removed?
There's some of them, no. Uh, they're in the V ditch. And I mean, they're, that was unintended. But like I said, the, the, those are the only things holding up that wall right now.
I see. I guess what I was just wondering too, just in regards to that, I mean, it's like that's been a, also an age-old problem as far as things growing in our drainage systems, you know?
Exactly.
You know, what do we?
Well, there's a part of the problem that we have is we don't have access to the majority of the drainage just without going through some of the yards. Most of these houses have fences. And so the, the easement has not been left there with fences. It's kind of goes back to our fence ordinance that we discussed the reason for it. So we'll have to get an easement to go through this, this house yard, which won't be a problem. But to do anything else, if we can't get our equipment around that ninety-degree, then we're going to have to, have to get somebody else's permission, get on the property, take their fence down to get to it. That's just the only way we can access it.
It's a jigsaw puzzle.
It really is.
That's the same way if you backed up where Clyde Holland's place used to be.
Yes, sir.
Same way all the way up into there, because you look at the road, there's so many trees in there. And there's other guys that's came to the council before and that's the same thing because it's those trees, comes to your property and just down the street.
Right, Colby. Is that right? So. We're going to try and fix the problems the best we can, so I'll, I'll probably, we're going to have the call tomorrow, see what date we can get this. As far as I'm concerned, y'all approve, we can ask them to put it in the paper this week to try to get the actual numbers back. And find out that this is actually the cost.
I would like.
Let us, since Papa, you heard the urgency of this gentleman, there's other issues happening, I'm not sure if you're laying on that, but I hate to think that that old yard continues to disappear and we're paying for a house.
Well, there was one young man that he'd come on back on the street back in there too. He went up in that V ditch himself with Paul Willard and his, one of his crew members. And he cleaned that all the way out to back up to the black side of that hill. Because I personally think he did.
Yeah.
Yeah, a norm here. It's not norm leaders.
He's going, he hired it, he never done. Let him come to the street.
Any more questions on the Spruce Street? Okay, I'm going to skip back over to the capital side. We deferred from last year to this year over three hundred thousand dollars in capital. And I'm going to recommend that we defer all of our capital that we have in the budget for this year. So I'm not going to have any capital expenditures in equipment if you approve. So our only money will be in these projects, these overlay projects. And that way, if we do need some money to, to support the city sales and use tax, I think we can transfer that over to, we were just paying out of that fund. So that will give us a little bit more breathing room until we know that we're going to have another fusion after the twenty twenty-six election. If we eliminate, yeah, so there's another three hundred thousand right there. So we'll eliminate that if y'all agree.
Was there anything that we have to really agree or are you just saying it's money not going to be spent?
Well.
Out of the budget?
I just want you to know that it's going to be there. I don't know if you have to approve it. I kind of like.
There's some type of notation, you need to, or you act on it.
We need a resolution for not spending this. So that it's. What? That's what he's asking.
You want, you want, what is the question?
Do we need a resolution to, or is everybody just saying we're not going to spend it?
He's just proposing that he not spend that.
What, what?
If you want to remove it for the year, why not spend it for the year?
I would like to not spend it for that, for that, for those capital items, I'd rather move it over, rock and use it for asphalt.
He wants to move it back to city sales and use tax for improvement.
Yes, that requires a resolution.
That's what I thought.
Okay.
Especially when you're talking about tax money.
Can we make a resolution that we do that and then somehow he follow up with that?
Do you want to bring back a resolution next meeting? I think that'd be better. There's something involved, I think.
Yes.
Okay, well, I'll put that on the next. Resolution to then budget.
Capital spending.
Transfer.
Transfer, yes.
So if you've been up north, maybe you've seen, they started back again. We started last year with the, with the fox run going up to this flash pad. Had cleared the swamp there so they could get the utilities in. And so there was a little bit of congestion area with the people working on the sewer and pouring concrete. So we kind of backed off a little bit to allow them access to get that done, since they're going to have to do it for us anyway. So, so we're back up there and that, that thing should be ready to go when the splash pad opens. So we're looking forward to that. So that's where that is. The other thing I was going to touch on too. We've got some items that we're going to send to auction. And we will, I will have a list that has everything on it for your approval. We may not have it next month, but we're going to, we're going to get rid of some things that we're not doing. There's several pieces of equipment, trailers and things that we haven't used. And so they don't need to be sitting there, we will put that money back in, fuse that back to as well. So I'm looking for ways to try to make sure that we have money to do the improvements we need to do. Just going back and looking at the, at the report that we have on our streets and where, where streets are. And I think Buck said it before, we kind of throw a dart at the book and, and start anywhere. But there are streets that need more attention than others. And so we, of course, we've been actively patching potholes as they come in. Of course, this last round of snow didn't help us any. So we're hoping to go back after that, after we get all the sand and salt off the street. So, um, we'll, we're still sending the sweeper truck around to get all that off and then we'll get in there and it's dry enough to get the patches in for the ones that were created during the storm. Let's see, what else? I think that's all I was really going to. Sure. Do you have any other questions?
I, and this is just a, a side note, but I thought with that, I've been watching the kind of discussion most about, I mean, so street expenditures, but I guess there, is there still something to, it's still kind of bugging me about the veteran's way, you know, when we said that engineering adjustments or whatever were, were half the the cost of something that I think that was already engineered, it shouldn't have been, mean that much to alter the engineering just because of the sewer line.
Should, we had a meeting with Olson?
Yes.
On, on that very specifically and a few other things, and they were going to provide, have they gotten back with you?
Yeah, I've got kind of a synopsis that I gave you on that as well.
He can answer that, because we asked that very, I think all those in the room asked the same question.
Right, we did.
Hit it pretty hard, so.
So that, that, that change order was not, and I'm sorry I was sick, I had the flu and I couldn't, I'll tell you, I was struggling, but I saw the phone, so I'm sorry. But what, what, that change order wasn't solely that section. The change order included the one foot that we had to go down further than what was measured. And then the field that took that back up. There were some discrepancies between the contractor and the engineers on how much that was. Contractor was higher. But engineering firm was lower. Contractor was higher, but engineering firm was lower, so obviously we took the number. But having them on site was the reason that was done. Construction management, all the projects going on, they're, they're keeping an eye on everything, making sure it's up to standard, everything they do, the cores. So, that's part of the engineering cost, because of the time that it took to get down further, to get to something solid that they could build it back up. They saved us at least that much in, in fill, up to speed. So, the time for completion was longer than what the original contract was forces. So, that's, that's part of that, that you've got your fill and your depth, and then your engineer on the, on site, your construction manager on site. The, the smallest amount was the section that was incorrectly surveyed. And that's what it rolled back down to, was the survey was off, the surveyor went to a different depth than what that sewer was, and, and that's what threw it off. And then, of course, a little bit of engineering change descended from going north to going south.
Did he send you the numbers though, Jeff, to, to, or what you're saying, I mean, we all heard that saying that he was gonna send, 'cause I, we asked him.
Yeah.
I wanna see.
I can, I can, I can, I can send that to Daniel, ever send that out.
Yeah, we'll get that to you, 'cause he, we were very specific, I just started the meeting by saying, or somebody did, so, we all kinda chatted and said, what happened? And why are we $50,000 for change order, or $50,000 for engineering, $50,000 for the, the, the work? Yeah, I recall, and they were like, no, no.
During, during our budget briefings, I, I had mentioned that we were gonna have a change order. And I had budgeted that money, I didn't know exactly what it was, I took a swag. That's why the money was already in the budget, was I was prepared for that, and I kinda, I gave y'all a heads up. But I didn't get the, we were going back and forth on those amounts till the day after the last council meeting. I got that change order, I think, on Tuesday, while I was sick, and I was, I was trying to look at it. And then, of course, we had the special call meeting, but I don't think, I didn't explain it well enough. And I, like I said, I really wasn't in the right mind to be able to do all that on the phone, just too much. But they did, they did supply us with some better understanding, pretty, it's a pretty good report, I have an email back, and we'll send that to you.
All right, anything else from Mr.?
Yeah, can I add, add one thing on that project that you just mentioned, just so you guys can watch for this? Jeff and I had a conversation about the billing that's coming in from them. There's some issues with the billing, we were watching it real closely. First, the first two draws that came back, the dollar, and here's the actual history of it. The first one that came in January that said the project construction cost with change order was 600, without the change order actually, was $624,000. And we had that on the first one, the first draw, and the second draw. So, the first draw that had just came in, asking for $38,000, was saying that the project construction cost is $621,000. We have no idea why it dropped. So, I charged him with going and finding out what happened there. And the second thing is, the amount that's left, it stems from this first construction draw. They have, Crawford still indicates that we paid them $171,000 instead of the $177 we actually paid. So, there's a $6,000 variance between what our records show based on what we paid and what their records show based on what they say they received. Although, we have the cancelled checks, so we know they, they're not giving us credit for six grand. So, we're watching this, just to make sure that we, we're, we're not gonna pay them the $141, but they're still saying that we're gonna owe after this third draw for the completion of the project. We say, based on your information, we, we only owe $135,000, which is that $6,000 difference. So, just keep that in mind.
I'm also working with Crawford on that, those numbers. So, we're holding that purchase order until we know what's going on with the.
We're okay in paying up until the final payout, then we're gonna sell it. I don't want him to get with Crawford until it's come. You need to, you need to reflect the correct payments in your detailed statistics, otherwise, if somebody's not watching it carefully, you're gonna overpay them on six grand.
Yeah, we're, we're just wanting to say, credit for credit we've already paid.
Exactly, so, we're working on that, I have gotten a response, we did that last Friday, I think.
I personally haven't driven out there, but the report is that they're back on that job.
They are back out there and working.
They done bee, they done a bee ditch to that little, little branch that's right there.
So, we should be seeing.
That was the first thing they needed to do was the drainage part.
They did the drainage and they're down hooked up to the other one coming east of way.
We made calls, we made interviews, I mean, meetings, so that should be completed hopefully soon. And Main Street, I know nobody's really asked, but that horrible mess up on Main Street, they're back on that too, so that should be, no one will forget those people's yards back too. I can't believe those people have been very patient.
They have been.
All right, thank you, Jeff. Department head, reports and questions, we got six department heads here if you wanna ask. Got anybody? Council? We go right into council forums, if there's nothing for department heads. So, council forum it is.
I have to, I just have two things I have to.
We have to get, get to department forum.
Uh, yeah. Casey, what was the number on what we got from the auction for your purse stuff? Do you remember?
$2,000 and some change.
Okay, and then the police department was 60 bucks. Oh, that's all, God, okay. We wanted to record that to y'all, and.
No, we auctioned off the truck and two 031 motors.
Yep.
And the other one, they got. Now, that truck, so you know, you'll remember, that's the truck that, that I purchased, or I, the city purchased for me as parts director, that green Ford. So, it was well-used.
Also, didn't that be bricks?
Didn't no bricks. And the guys didn't know it till they drove, till they drove it to Allen. It was a surprise.
The other thing?
Yeah, I went over there.
You all have those numbers already, thanks to Captain D back here.
Oh.
He sent them to me, and I have sent them to you all.
Thank you, Captain D.
Also, y'all made, for some reason, the last council meeting, you, you set a date of April 10 for a quarterly financial review, but you already got them established via your adopted annual calendar. So, do you wanna keep the ones you already established, cancel one you set for April 10th when it's really April 16?
Six days forward.
What do you wanna do about that?
Well, we can change our mind.
I know, but do you really, I mean, we got two of them there.
Which one do you wanna do?
Tom said it was down here.
You don't want?
16th or 10th, is that the question?
April 16th.
He handed 10.
No, you had the 16th, you had it set for the 10th for some reason, 'cause you didn't know you had it.
So, you'll leave the 16th?
16th.
Oh, you, this kid's not here, we're gonna call 10 under the 9s. Oh, there, there was a reason.
Do you wanna cancel the 16th one? Okay, just so y'all know, we got a July one and an October one already, no, we had. All right, we will get rid of the 16th one, all right? And you said it was 6:30.
He's pointing, he's over. So, Maple Ridge ends this? All right, anything else, council forum, I need announcements tonight, do you guys have anything? So, I, I know you're heartbroken, and you probably haven't realized it, but typically I would be giving you my state and city address tonight, therefore, it would be at least midnight. 'Cause I would've done it at the beginning of the meeting. So, I did not do it tonight, for various reasons, one, some of these department heads, they've got me in there, not to name any names. But, so there's that, and I just not had an opportunity to get it put together. So, my, and I have 90 days, as you may or may not know the law is, to present that to you. You will get a, a copy, a printed copy of my state and city address in your hands prior to when I'm gonna give it. I'm gonna give it on March the 31st, can't go till April, 'cause that's against the law. So, I'm gonna give it March 31st, what's it say, Tuesday night? Or, no, Monday night?
I'm sorry.
March 31st, Monday night?
Yeah, 6:00.
So, 6 o'clock at the Greenwood, the new Greenwood Senior Citizens Center, and we'll make a combination ribbon cutting and state and city address. So, some of the people that have never got to hear me talk for 45 minutes will be forced to, 'cause they'll be there for the ribbon cutting. So, you're cordially invited to send, send, it's not a meeting, it's just a gathering.
So, we still wait for the times, it's really?
Absolutely, absolutely.
How's it get it in the city's official record?
Well, I'll be taking your copy. Like, what, what time, what time to do that?
I'm gonna show you later what I'm talking about.
Okay, well, I have, here's what it says, "The mayor shall report within the first 90 days of each year, and at such other times as he or she shall deem expedient to the council the municipal fair decision recommended such manner."
I know, but I just don't report anything out there, it's one thing, but I'll just stick it in, in there, and I'll just be.
Yeah, physically, so, at least it's 10.
Councils may not be there though.
Well, hopefully they can.
No one show up to me, man.
I did, I am requesting of a, well, it's best spores, I called him, or we were talking, I'm asking him to, to provide the cooker. So, I'm planning on having some hammers and hot dogs out there for this ribbon cutting. And I'm hoping, obviously, the seniors will be there, along with area agency agents and various people, open to the public to show off the facility. Uh, we think, and, and the only thing that might be missing from the building would be some equipment, but I think Mr. Coe, he believes it'll be delivered before the end. That's, that's another three weeks away, I would take. So, but the inside, the interior is, I mean, you can go in there now and just mop and clean up and it's good to go, everything. I think they were finishing up some tile on the bathroom, so. It looks good. I will comment to, or make you aware that the new, the new landscaping people that we're using for city hall and mowing, fire departments and everywhere else to mow in. I actually did it after, because our other company wanted to double on our price, I mean, literally. If, if it was costing $2,000 to mow here, it costs $4,000 all of a sudden, so I said, okay, no. And so, Daniel got visiting, called another company, it's Ground Work. Ground Effects, that's the new company we're using, and I, we hit them up, asked Daniel, she called, and they're gonna provide some free landscaping out there for us. And I told them to build a little sign up on there we have, so that's, these guys are ripping out what's already been old. So, we're getting kinda dressed up. Uh, I did notice that, Sonny, have you, have you told Mike again about this new date, or I don't wanna, might just leave it at 18?
No, when I said the 18th, he said, I feel good about that.
Okay, so, we won't even tell him. I know the bigger, the biggest thing they're doing right now is that septic system, they got it dug out, so that'll, I'm sure we're working on it, so. Anyway, that's, that's what we're gonna do, and I'll get you a copy, uh, in your hand, hand-delivered, or if you want your mic, see, I'll pick up, we'll do that, I have a bound copy of it. And I think that's all I have, do you, council have anything at all? Buddy, did you, you were here? No, just for fun. Cameron, thank you for staying away, you're young, you should please don't stay that way. Bob? Chamber?
Well, I'm gonna confess that we, we lost one on the electric vehicle charges there.
That ain't happening.
Uh, all right, have a good meeting, got a lot done, appreciate it, thank you to department heads for doing what you do with the in-house. I'll make that contact in a minute. Two seconds. Two seconds.